Lee Summit is your destination for big city vibes and small town charm. Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmers Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee. And discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Hello, Lee Summit. Here's your flash briefing for the week of February 5th. City council meet for regular session Tuesday night at 6:00 in council chambers and city hall. You can quickly catch up on city council meetings by subscribing to the council debrief newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at cityofls.net. Heads up drivers, be road aware. A section of northbound northeast Rice Road near the retention pond will be closed for two months for stormwater pipe repair. The contractor anticipates intermittent daily closures. All work is weather permitting and schedules are subject to change. And southwest Hollywood Drive and southwest Summit Crest Drive north of 150 are set to close for utility work for one week, weather permitting. Find detour routes on the city's website. And stay connected with the city by following us on our social media platforms. Be the first to know about city updates and related news. Find us on Facebook, X, Instagram, and YouTube. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
I'm Assistant Chief Jim Eden.
And I'm Battalion Chief Ben Hicks.
And today we're at Lee Summit Fire Station 3. Fire Station 3 was part of the 2016 No Tax Increase General Obligation Bond for Public Safety Initiatives. The station was built and occupied in August of 2020. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, we've not been able to give tours or have an actual ribbon cutting. So we want to invite you in today to give you the opportunity to see what goes on within the Lee Summit Fire Department Station.
Let's go take a tour. This is our admin side of the facility. We use this side mainly for offices. We have a lot of work during the day, whether it's training or doing reports or just generally taking care of the shift that we need to do. At this particular station, Station 3, we do have an assistant chief that works out of here. That person has their own office where they need to manage what's going on throughout the day with the shift and staffing and as well as running calls out of here. The captain has their own office as well. What the captain does is at this specific station is in charge of both the fire truck that's here as well as the ambulance. And so with all those personnel responsibilities as well as running calls and reports, that's where they work out of. And generally for the rest of the crew, which is somewhere around five to six individuals, we have rooms where I reports and we have additional training rooms and other rooms where people can work. Walking into our living area, I think it's important to recognize that we work 48 hour shifts. So in the evenings, after 5 o'clock after work is done, we may have the opportunity to catch a game or something else as long as we're not running calls. And this gives us the opportunity to do that. When we go into our kitchen, I think this gives you a great reason to know why we go to the grocery store when you see fire trucks to the grocery store, what we're doing. Also for two days, working for 48 hours, we buy all our meals at the grocery store and then we come in here and cook just like you guys do at home. So everybody has their own fridge on each shift as well as their own pantry and then we cook those meals here. Going into the sleeping side of things, we've got a couple of different things that are significant. We have our own laundry room, which again is important when we're here for 48 hours. The opportunity to wash and clean our clothes and bedding is very important for hygiene. And walking into where our beds are, we keep the kind of sleeping quarters over on one side of the building. It gives us both easy access out to where our fire apparatus are as well as kind of keeping it a little bit quieter for those people that have been up all night running calls. We have 11 bedrooms here at this station. And the reason we built it with so many bedrooms is we want to give ourselves as a city the opportunity to expand. So if we need to put another apparatus here or numerous other people working out of the station, that's already in place as far as infrastructure goes and we don't need to go back and try to make it bigger or better. And that's really important for us, especially because the old station was so small. Back out on the apparatus floor, we have doors facilitated as many places as possible. So that way when we're sleeping at night and a call comes out, we can make our way out fairly quickly to get out onto the truck if we need to and run a call. On the other side of the station, we kind of have other stuff that we may want to keep separated if we want to. Physical fitness is very important to us as firefighters. So in order to better ourselves and make sure we're as healthy as we can to do this job, we have our own gym facility here that we kind of go throughout the day when we can and get an opportunity to come in and work out. Our goal when we run calls and we get back to the station after calls, our goal is to get ready to go back as soon as we can to run another call. So we have the opportunity or capability here to fill up our air tanks. You see firefighters wear the big air tanks on their backs and they use those in a fire. We can come back and fill those up. And make sure that we're ready to go again when we're wanting to go run another call. We have our own workshop here. We work on a lot of our tools and making sure that everything's clean and operational. And this gives us the capability to do that. Again, to make sure that we have everything we need and we're as capable as we can to run a calls throughout the city. Cancer prevention is very important in the fire service right now. Because of that, we have an extractor machine. And what this does is gives us the capability when we come back from a fire, we can put our bunker gear into this machine and get all that really nasty crud off of our gear. Again, kind of getting back to that cancer prevention mode, allowing us to be as clean as we possibly can for the next call. Finally is our bunker gear room. We each have our own individual locker. This gives us the opportunity to store our gear when we're not here working in between shifts as well as keep a clean extra set on here in case we do run a fire and we need to clean our current gear. Typically, this is where your day starts off at the fire station. You come in and get your gear and put it on wherever you're working that day. And then you end the same way, bringing your stuff back to your locker to go home after working. This is Med 3. This ambulance just currently moved into the station from Station 7. Station 3, since we've had it built, has turned into one of our busiest stations in the city. Therefore, we wanted to provide the best care and the closest units we could. So we moved one of our ambulances up and this became Med 3 for this particular instance. Out of this station, we also have Pumper 3. And that's the fire apparatus that they utilize to run the calls on this west end of the city. The last vehicle that you see is the chief's vehicle. We have two shift chiefs on shift every day and they split the city. And this chief running out of this station typically covers the west and south area of the city. While our chief of Station 2 covers kind of that northeast section of our city and they divide it up evenly.
Thank you for going on a tour with us today. If you have any other questions about the Lee Summit Fire Department, please go to our webpage at lsfire.net or follow us on Facebook at Lee Summit Fire Department.
Thanks for joining us on the tour.
It's extremely rewarding overall, just the fact of working with other council people and other volunteer commission members that are so involved and care so much about making this community better. It sort of kind of lifts your own spirits by being involved in that kind of environment with other people like that. For many years, I was a typical resident, raising a family, going to work. In many cases, leaving the city for employment and went through a leadership class through the chamber. Learned a lot about our city and learned about all the great amenities and resources we have. And was asked if I was interested in volunteering on a commission. I said yes, and kind of the rest is history. I've just completed my third year on city council. And so looking forward to finishing strong with this first term and look forward to continuing to serve this community. My thing is that there's so many talented people in this community that believe in so many different initiatives. And for me, one of the big reasons why I decided to run was that as a residential taxpayer, I felt that we can always increase the business tax base of our community. And that's kind of been a big part of my involvement on city council is to encourage and promote and make it easier for development to occur, commercial development to occur in our community, to increase that tax base and diversify that tax base. And so I think we've made significant strides the last few years. We've had a collective, great group of council members and mayor where we've really truly accomplished a lot of things that there were somewhat kind of stumbling blocks for previous councils. Working new contracts with our union personnel, firefighters and police was a big accomplishment for us. The fact that we were able to push along some initiatives like the downtown renovation for a market, a farmer's market. It's been a great experience to be part of those meetings, to help nudge it. And to the point where now we have a developer involved is just a great feeling to have been part of that. And others, I mean, I think our park system, we've continued to support our park system to add a new community center, for example, that we negotiated with metropolitan community colleges. So I'm proud of all those things and just being able to help make a difference in many aspects. I love definitely spending time with my family. We have three daughters and they're all fairly active and some in sports and other extracurricular activities. But for me, I love being outdoors. I love the trails. I love riding my bike and I love playing golf. And we have awesome amenities and options within our community to have that kind of a lifestyle. This June will be 25 years that my wife and I have lived in Lee Summit and have raised three daughters in this community. I know this city has incredible talented residents that come from all different walks of life. You know, very diverse group of families in our community. That it's so rewarding to be involved on a government level or some kind of civic commission or committee that you get, in many cases, you get out of it more than you put in. And I truly live by that and I believe that.
Welcome everyone. Would you please rise for the invocation and stay standing for the pledge of allegiance?
Father, as we meet tonight, may our minds be clear as we make our decisions. Maybe we always be thoughtful of the duty that we have to our citizens and our city. We pray for neighborhood spirit and are always mindful that generosity, peace, and trust will give rise to a strong community. Amen.
Again, welcome everyone. I'm calling to order the City of Lee Summit Regular Session number 63. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Pryor. Here. Councilmember Shields.
Here.
Councilmember Lovell.
Here.
Councilmember Edson.
Here.
Councilmember Felker.
Here.
Councilmember DeMaro.
Here.
Councilmember Hodges.
Here.
Mayor Brotim Lopez. Mayor Baird.
Here.
First thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I have a motion to adopt the agenda by Councilmember DeMaro, seconded by Councilmember Felker. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. The agenda is approved unanimously. Thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Also adopted, thank you all. And next we have council roundtable. These are items of general interest, community announcements and such. Councilmembers? Yes, Councilmember Shields.
Go Chiefs.
Chiefs, yes. Member Edson.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. Yeah, you know, even though it's February, the weather's really nice. And some of the good folks on the north side of town got out this weekend and did some trash pickup at Lakewood Boulevard and 470. I've seen some other people picking up trash and I just want to say thank you to all those people. And hopefully we can keep this up through the spring and keep all the roads nice and clean.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you. So I just wanted to say that we have a lot of really cool businesses in Lee Summit that right now are making a lot of the chief shirts and everything like that. So I just wanted to remind people to support local when they're buying all of their chief's apparel. My shirt's from KT Swagger, which is pretty cool because it was just, I think, last week they were on the news. So they've been getting a lot of media attention because of their shirts. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, very good. Then that will take us to the public hearing that we have. So I'm going to close the regular session and open up the public hearing regarding the matter of the Land Clearance Redevelopment Authority five-year public hearing. But all those wishing to speak to this matter, please rise and be sworn in by the city clerk.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out?
I do.
In this instance, the city is the applicant. So Mr. Ehlum.
All right, Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. Ryan Ehlum, Assistant City Manager. And with me this evening is Mark White, the chairman of the Land Clearance for Redevelopment Authority. And so what we're going to do tonight is the Land Clearance for Redevelopment Authority has a statutory requirement that every five years, really every five years after August 13th, 1982, very specific, that the governing body shall hold a public hearing regarding those land clearances and urban renewal projects under the jurisdiction of the authority with the purpose of the hearing to determine if the authority is making satisfactory progress under the proposed time schedule contained within the approved plans for completion of such projects. So in short, we're here to discuss the projects and the progress that the projects have been making for the Land Clearance for Redevelopment Authority. So with that, I'm going to go over the membership, a little bit of a brief history, the purpose, mission, values, their activities, and then get into the individual projects as we move forward. I'm going to try to be brief and be available for questions at the end. So membership, there are five commissioners. Mark White is the chairman, Shelley Kenevan is the vice chair, Jason Betts is secretary, Drew Reynolds and Rich Wood round out our LCRA as commissioners. The LCRA is actually a relatively old tool, I guess is how I'll say that. It was 1961. It was passed by the voters through a special election. And we refer to it as kind of chapter 99 of the state statutes. That's the enabling statutory authority, those chapters in the Missouri state statutes. There was a period in time where the LCRA was inactive. And then in 2009, the mayor appointed new members to reactivate the LCRA within Lee Summit. Again, the public hearing purpose, we touched a little bit on that earlier. Now, if you're doing your math in your head, within August 13th of 1982 and five years from there, 2024 doesn't quite match up. We did get a little off schedule with our public hearings. So we are utilizing this public hearing and then we are planning another public hearing by October of 2027. So that'll be the next time that we come back with this public hearing to kind of get back on that schedule. The last scheduled hearing that we did have was October 19th of 2017. So when the LCRA was reconstituted, they did come up with an LCRA mission and values associated with that. And again, it's encouraging development and redevelopment of blighted, insanitary, or deteriorated properties to the benefit of the community. And they have a couple of core values, transparency, integrity, and accountability being those core values that the LCRA kind of tries to live by. So what is the LCRA? The LCRA really is a very flexible economic development tool per the state statutes. And there's a number of these different items that the tool can be utilized for. The most common that we've utilized LCRA with is what we call the Certificates of Qualification for Tax Abatement. That's what traditionally we have used to provide tax abatement for various projects that meet various goals. There's also the ability for sales and use tax exemption on construction materials, specific redevelopment plans for extended tax abatement, some tailored incentive packages, as well as targeted incentive areas. So the enabling statutes really allow the broad use of the tool to really meet specific targets for whatever the specific project situation may be. When the LCRA was reconstituted, a couple of proactive urban renewal areas were developed. We have the downtown urban renewal area, Lakewood Business Park Urban Renewal Area, and then US 50 and M 291 highway urban renewal areas. And you can see the dates that those were all formed as well as amended. We have not created a new proactive urban renewal area since December 17th of 2015. And what these proactive urban renewal areas, I guess practically do is they are areas that have been designated to where the Certificates of Qualification for Tax Abatement is a more readily available tool for the right project. The blight determination has already been found and other statutory requirements have been met. So now getting into the projects, on the screen, we have our downtown urban renewal area. You can see here that we've got three active projects in the downtown area with Greider Orthodontics, Bridge Base, and Ellis Glen. You'll notice that Ellis Glen is outside of the urban renewal area and that's actually a redevelopment plan. So Greider Orthodontics and Bridge Bates are certificates of qualification whereas Ellis Glen is a redevelopment plan. We do have some completed projects in the area and you can see those on the map as well. Moving on, this is the Lakewood Business Park Urban Renewal Area. And we've had one project in this area and that's the Coleman Equipment Project. And that project is still currently active, but this was the last year for it to be active. And so it will be fully on the tax rolls next year. Then we get into our US 50 and 291 urban renewal area. And this urban renewal area is really very large. And so I've broken it up into a north and south. And you can kind of see the corridor, the major highway corridors that have been marked for redevelopment. Number of projects in this area that have been moving forward, both active and inactive projects. And then as we look to the south area, primarily in our Newberry subdivision area here, there are several other active projects. Moving on the screen, now we've got a whole lot of numbers and text associated with each one of the projects. These are our active LCRA Certificates of Qualifications projects. And these are updated as of January 17th. You can see we have the project, what the abatement terms was supposed to be, what the proposed investment was. And then we've got an estimated abatement. That was the estimated abatement at the time that the abatement was provided, when the certificate was issued, and then if there is a termination notice associated with that. You can see there are three on here that termination notices need to be issued for. And that is to turn off the abatement and turn them back on the tax rolls. So they will move from this list to the completed list next year once it's verified that they are back on the tax rolls. Every year, we try to go in and calculate the level of abatement that they've received to track that along the way. And you'll notice here that there's no numbers for this Aristocrat Motors here. And that is a result of the county has not valued that property. That's, they just haven't valued the property. It is an active abatement, but that's why we don't have any way of calculating what the actual abatement received so far is on that.
When does that abatement start then?
Well, so they completed construction in 2020. So for our purposes, the abatement started in 2020. And we just can't calculate what the actual abatement was because the, and that will go...
Is this one you've brought up to Jackson County probably?
I'm sorry.
Is this one that you've probably brought up to Jackson County?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
On the screen here now, we have our LCRA redevelopment plans. And you can see these redevelopment plans have slightly different conditions associated with them, different time periods. Each one of these are unique as they go through. And you see we've had a number of these over the last several years. We've got proposed investments, what their estimated abatement was supposed to be. We have the sales tax exemption. have the sales tax exemption because each one of these projects were anticipated to receive sales tax exemption on construction materials, and then we have a calculated abatement received of these projects. Vanguard Villas, this abatement received here is a partial year abatement because it just completed construction on there, so it hasn't had a full year yet. And then the Southside Plaza Shopping Center, this has started to receive full years of abatement. The Paragon Star Projects, the apartments in the Village Garage, they have not started construction yet. Ellis Industrial also has not started construction. Ellis Glen, Colburn Ridge, those both started construction within the last quarter, and Reinhardt Food Service, that started construction this year as well. The 291 South LCRA Redevelopment Plan, that is a different type of plan that was recently put into place, you can see November 14th of 2023. That plan, we consider more of an enabling plan for future projects within the redevelopment area to come into, and at this time, there haven't been any projects come into the redevelopment area, but we're expecting that to occur soon. So there will be individual project areas associated with that redevelopment area. On the screen here, we have our completed projects. You can see there's been four certificates of qualification that have been completed. Of those four, Primary Eye Care is the only project that had demolition but never went any further than that, so I wouldn't say that was completed, but it is closed. The other projects have been completed, La Cotta, Stanley, Third Street Social, and they're back on the tax rolls. As far as the LCRA redevelopment plans, we have had three projects that had redevelopment plans for the purpose of sales tax exemption on construction materials, and all three of those projects have been completed. Some annual and ongoing efforts, the LCRA commissioners annually review and agree to a conflict of interest policy. We have annual reporting, so every year we go over these numbers, as well as the project reviews for abatement tracking. It's very coordinated with the overall economic development incentive policy, and then ongoing application, reviews, and recommendations. Moving forward, we are going to be adding to the abatement tracking spreadsheet and a few additional items that we can get from a, trying to get as accurate of numbers as we can for how the abatement is tracking and to ensure that the goals are being met for each individual plan. And as you can see on the report, some of these plans go for 25 years, so there'll be a lot of ongoing follow-up and follow-through as things move forward. So with that, I went through the information pretty quickly, happy to answer any questions, and that is the information that we have.
All right, thank you. We have questions. Councilmember Lovell.
Thank you. Go back to, I was just, keep going back. One more. Sorry.
No problem.
I think what I was getting to is like where we have a projected, so we have a projected abatement, like of what we think that that's going to be, and then if I did the math right, like it looks like what they've received, it's not tracking as high as what we initially thought, like Bridge Base, for instance. You see there, started in 18, that's when it's issued. Five years in, 4,000, or is that on track? I don't, how long is the abatement for, 10 years, so that would mean, like am I, you know, just doing quick math there, that would be 40,000 by the life of it? So does that mean, what does that mean exactly, like if they're not tracking, or I saw a couple that looked like they're tracking above what we thought, so.
Yeah, so with a lot of these, there's calculations that are done to estimate what the proposed taxes are going to be, and there is variation in that as to what the actual valuation from the county actually ends up being. So a lot of these are set up to be, like Minsky's, for example, is 100% abatement for five years, so whatever that was valued at, that would be the abatement associated with that. So we kind of track those along, but at the end of the day, the question is how close is it to that estimate? Doesn't really impact the abatement or necessarily mean that it extends out or anything like that, if you will, so.
And I know in certain cases, there are obviously, to get these, there are requirements that have to be met, too, so it could be maybe certain things weren't met, and that would affect the abatement or the number that they got back, or is that, or is it strictly off the property tax, like?
It's mostly strictly off the property tax, as far as if they estimated that their property was going to be valued more than the county did, then their abatement is going to be less. If they, if we underestimated the value, then their abatement was going to be more.
And then, and also, I mean, just something that would be helpful, but these are 100% property tax abatements, is that correct?
Yeah.
All of them are a little bit different, I got you.
Yeah, and that is on the increment, so.
Right.
These are increment.
You know, it'd also be nice to see, like, you know, just from our perspective, like, yes, that was abated, but we also got this, and then like when something comes off, like now here's the full tax roll that we get. A lot of times, we see abatement, but there's still property taxes we're getting, and then also when it resets, when it comes off, seeing that number, like how we're getting it at a much higher margin than we were before, too. Talking with constituents about abatements. Not necessarily taking money. Extra information, that'd be helpful to see what the benefit is to the city also by doing these things. I think it's a great presentation, it's interesting to look at these projects. I know I was, I was actually on LCRA for a few of them a long time ago, so it's kind of nice to see how they're coming along and...
Thank you. Councilmember, oops, Councilmember Felker.
Just to reiterate, what I think I just heard was, when we see the amount received higher than the estimated, what that typically is meaning, whatever value they were assuming and we were assuming at the beginning, value of the property is greater now than what we anticipated would be. Operating in is more valuable, and I think the Councilmember Lovell's point is, off, will better tax perspective reward coming back to the taxing jurisdictions.
That's correct, yeah, that's correct. And I will say on some of these, I don't think it's probably to anybody's surprise, the increases in 2023 were significant.
And 19.
And 19.
And in those, and as well, not likely, it's probably very much not likely, that there was, whatever numbers the county is using were not contested by the owner because they're in the abatement period, is that likely the case?
I would say that's probably likely the case. I don't know if we have a way of knowing if that particular property was appealed or not.
They wouldn't have as much, they wouldn't have a incentive to do so until they get ready to roll off, so.
That's correct.
So both, I mean, these, when the numbers are larger, it could mean a better outcome from a taxing jurisdictions perspective at the end, but it is also possible that they're gonna appeal it and come and kind of push a number down versus where county's pegging it at due to the large increases you've talked about. Okay, so, I appreciate.
I think they would, I think there's incentive for them to appeal it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Even when they're in the middle of an abatement.
Okay.
Because then when it comes off.
They don't have to fight so many.
They want to keep it as low as possible.
It would seem like, if I was the owner, I would want to appeal it all along the way. I don't own property in the middle of it with an abatement. And I'm just curious, so like actually here on our screen, Greider, JCI, there's the random 27% in the final year, 79%, what's, do you have any, is there a story there? Okay, there's a story.
There is, so those are, as you can see, they're some of our older LCRA projects, and at the time, they were trying to hit a very specific number on there, and that proved to be difficult. I would say it's impractical, I guess, in order to try to hit the specific numbers, but those contracts are set up for those percentages, and that was based off of an estimate, trying to hit a specific number, but then through the implementation, we end up having to submit a pilot for that last year, so that the county will still abate it, and then we submit a pilot for whatever that percentage is in there.
Got to do some nagging at the end.
Yeah.
So that kind of a question I have, whether for you or for Mr. Chair White, is are there any ways that we've used LCRA in the past that we regret or think are not necessarily were the best uses? On this, that you'd say, like this, for instance, okay, coming up with a, instead of trying to pinpoint a number, maybe just coming up with the right percentage each year or a number of years? Are there any other strategies that we've usually think we decided we're not going to do again because of experience?
I would say from a lessons learned perspective through the implementation on this, I think the more straightforward that we can make the projects with this particular tool is probably the better from a long-term administrative perspective, and these are typically lower investment amounts and smaller businesses associated with it than some of our larger tools. Our incentive policy, when looking at the LCRA, looks at a minimum investment of 500,000. Comparatively, all the rest of the incentive tools look at a minimum investment of 5 million or so. So this was a tool, I think, that was been set up to focus on that redevelopment, the smaller businesses, as well as job creation associated with that. So I think from a lessons learned perspective, the easier that we can make the implementation process tends to work well for the targeted individuals associated with, that are utilizing the tool.
That's helpful, I mean, because often I think incentives are viewed as just the lots of money coming from outside of town, or if you will, not just hometown, but those who are here wanting to... Kind of flip that question around, though, are there things, and maybe it's a slide down, yeah, so the south, I'm looking at the very bottom, South LCRA kind of answers this question, but are there any other, any other ways we are looking to use LCRA that we haven't yet? And so maybe that's two ways to think about that. One is location, which is what I think we're, with the South LCRA, is what we're talking about, but are there any other strategies to use that we're not tapping into that the statute provides for, that we should, that are on the table?
I may look to Mr. Bushak to provide a little bit more context to this, but I think that we're always looking for creative ways in order to, you know, fund public infrastructure and make things happen as best we can, and I know that the tool does allow a lot, and I think that we are utilizing a good portion of the tool now that we weren't utilizing, say, five years ago, but I'll let Mr. Bushak add a little bit more to that.
David Bushak, Chief Counsel of Economic Development and Planning. I would say, since I've been back in house over the last five years, we've used this, we've used LCRA on a greatly expanded basis. I think it's fair to say to all the projects that are on this particular slide, they've all been in the last five years, and this was a creative way to use this tool, especially compared to how other cities, most other cities in Missouri don't use this tool. But to answer your question, could we use it in other ways that we haven't, the answer is yes, and there's one way that's spelled out in the incentive policy that we haven't really gotten to yet, which is designating targeted incentive areas. So the idea would be, let's see if I can find, like, just to pick a map, one thing that could be done is, and I don't have an example here, but in an area that the city council has declared to be blighted, maybe down here, for example, or some other, maybe a pocket over here, just to illustrate the concept, in addition to declaring the property blighted, as the council's already done, in this case, back in 2014, the city council could take an extra step to, for example, pass a resolution that says, in this particular area where we've already declared it to be blighted, we are listing a certain level of investment criteria, and we're signaling to the development community that we would like to see investment in this area, and if you bring in this level of investment, this number of jobs, et cetera, whatever the criteria is, we'll provide this level of abatement, which would be a more forward-thinking step for the city done here. You'd be saying even more specifically, here's a targeted area we'd like to see redeveloped, and here's what we would provide if you come forward with that. That's an example.
And key to that designation is a designation of blight, right?
Right, which has already happened in my example.
Goes into a whole nother conversation, but I'm thinking of other areas that are vacant properties, completely vacant, and whether those, not dilapidated buildings, but could a blight declaration be a legitimate outcome that could lead to LCRA in other locations with that kind of targeted incentive draw?
I'd say the general answer is yes. Economic underutilization is one of the basis for valid blight finding. There's case law to that effect, that you don't just have to see buildings falling down to declare property blighted, and if property has been vacant for an extended period of time because of its access constraints, or water, sewer, road constraints, high development costs, then you could declare a certain area that just hasn't been developed blighted based on the economic underutilization concept, along with, this is a pocket of the city, right in the middle of the city, that hasn't developed over the entire life of the city. That would be the theory.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Bushak, thank you, Mr. Elam, and Mayor, I'll just comment, like, this goes right to the heart of some of the, I mean, this is one tool of many that we may talk about in our kind of conversations about forward-thinking development, how we can invite quality going forward.
Thank you. I would imagine it's been tough to do the valuations the last few years with inflation and a couple of these buildings cost three times what they were estimated a few years ago because of craziness in the economy. 2019 and '23 tax assessments were, you know, maybe not excessive, but they were big jumps in that. Okay, thanks, sir. You have any exhibits?
I don't think so, no, I don't.
All right. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this presentation? Any additional questions from council? Mr. Elam, do you care to make any further comment?
I would just say thank you to Mr. White for being present and...
I was gonna do that after the public comment part, after we close it, I was gonna thank him.
Okay, no further comment.
Thank you, sir. Okay, here now for the testimony, I'm closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session. Is there any council discussion on this application? And would anybody like to thank Mr. White for his service on the LCRA? We do appreciate it, this is tough, I know there's a lot of numbers that go behind this and the spreadsheets, and I know they've been reworked over the last, since 2009 it's been going on, so the last 15 years, it's, updates have been made, and it's not for someone that doesn't like numbers, so you must like numbers, is that right, Mr. White?
I want to say.
Come up to the microphone.
I'd also like to say, Ryan and Dave, you're, as a citizen at Lee Summit, it's been amazing to see your city staff in action and the great job they do summarizing this. I couldn't do what I do on the committee without their assistance, so that's great.
Are you like a pragmatist, you just, does it sound reasonable, you just double check and?
Correct, and I think we're...
Ask your questions.
All across the board, our board is reasonable to work with, that's what we strive for, so, yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to make further comment or discussion? I'm just happy Mr. White showed up. We don't usually get people from the commissions that shows up all the time. Some do, some do, but not from the LCRA typically, so. All right, well, there's nothing to vote on on this one, is there? Nope. So I'm gonna reopen the regular, I've already reopened the regular session, so that'll take us, we'll move on. Thank you for the presentation and such. Mr. Dunning, any comment? Okay. Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Felker? Ms. Volenweider?
I'm going to start describing what I'm doing, searching for the truth via uncovering the lies. I'm going to start off with a couple of deeds that I want you to note. This is a Sanco deed. This is a property across the street from me, and it talks about the west 533 feet of the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 6, Township 48, Range 31, lying southerly and westerly of Maybrook Road. And then note that it says, except that part in Maybrook Road. So whoever sold this to him said, I'm keeping that. He doesn't have title to that. That's, that's the 2013 deed. He bought property in 2013 there first. And then when Alice Harabaut died, he was able to buy the remainder of the land in a 2016 deed. And in that deed, it accepts out that piece of property that was in that other deed. So note that. This is the plat for that property, signed and sealed by Mark Holt, Eagle Point Survey. What I want you to note here is this panhandle is Sanco Acres Lot 2. That panhandle, if you look at it, says 54.34 feet right there. That's what that distance is. The scale on this is one inch equals 100 feet. If I measure that with my handy dandy ruler, it's about a half inch. So remember that one. Okay, now we're going to go to some of Bob Anderson's from Anderson Survey Company. This note, there is no sign and seal here, but this is a document that was given to the city. There is no watermark on this. There should be a watermark to keep misuse of this. Now, we're going to go back to this panhandle. This is the panhandle that we were at on the other one. The, this is Sanco Acres Lot 2. This is the panhandle. The scale on this one is one inch equals 40 feet. That's four inches. The other one showed us it was 54. This one's showing it's 160. So that 533 feet line has been moved, 200 feet almost, to the west because somebody needed to show this as being platted. That somebody was the Public Works Department because they were trying to say they had the right of way on this side. And they're using that, moving that, that, in my opinion is, they're moving that line This one's sealed. And he did it again. Somebody didn't catch it or somebody told him to do it. This was the handy dandy little deal I got in the fence removal letter. Does that look familiar? That's from Bob Anderson's, 5261 Northeast Maybrook Road, plat, first plat, the one that didn't have the watermark, the one that didn't have the seal. And that document got used by somebody. And they like to cut them out like this because then you don't see the seal, you don't see the north arrow, and you don't see the scale because this one is not one inch equals 40 feet.
All right, thank you, Ms. Volenweider. All right, we're going to go on to presentations at this point. We have Water Utilities Customer Service Recognition. Looks like Dom will start us off, Mr. Bennett?
Good evening. Dom Bennett, Assistant Director of Customer Care. Mayor and council, appreciate you having us here this morning. We, or this evening, sorry. We have some exciting news to go over that we wanted to touch base with you on in summarizing what occurred in Water Utilities in 2023. Let's go back here. All right, so first off, you might notice that we're missing someone this evening. So our fearless leader, Director Mark Schoffler, is under the weather and cannot be with us this evening. So sends his thanks and appreciation to the staff, also for the time for us being here this evening. But moving on, Jeff and I are going to cover some of the things that we have, we accomplished last year as a team and kind of a result of that and some recognition that was received. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Jeff and he's going to talk about some of the facts and figures.
All right. Jeff Thorne, Deputy Director, Water Utilities. He got in front of you a bunch of numbers. Well, when I look at the numbers, I don't really see the numbers. I see the team on our Water Utilities that does this work. So yeah, we read meters and process bills to the tune of almost a half million a year. Those have to be right. They have to be on time. Our meter readers are out reading routes every day. The people that process the bills are doing so every day. We're checking, double checking, making sure that those are correct, and those folks do a wonderful job of that. We do get questions, we do get calls, and we get visits. Our CSRs are up front. They do 30,000 calls a year and 2,700 emails. People walk in with questions, they walk out with answers, and they do a great job of it. We respond to service calls. Our field staff, you've probably seen them out and about, they're, they stay busy. 11,000 service calls plus. Last year was a doozy with the heat and the dry. We had 194 water main repairs we did last year, and it was a lot. Our field guys are incredible, our operations, facilities, meter, meter service techs are busy, busy. When it was cold, cold, we were out doing the work. And we submit the tests, we make sure the water's clean and safe, we stay within the bounds of the D N R. We process the payments, we work with the stuff, and we reinvest in our system. Our citizens expect a level of service, and we try to continue that level of service by renewing our infrastructure. In this last year, we spent 16 and a half million dollars doing so. This next year will probably be more than that. We continue to strive to deliver a level of service and, and set the expectation high for our staff because our citizens expect a lot from us. And we hope that we meet that.
So the utility, of course, has been serving the Community of Lee Summit for over 100 years in the traditional way of providing water and wastewater services with the infrastructure and has built a reputation, being, of course, having some of the lowest rates in the Kansas City metropolitan area, but having a high-quality level of service. A couple of years ago, though, we wanted to expand upon, expand upon the traditional roles of the utility and hit more into, in community engagement, getting out there, telling our story. We see each of these opportunities as a way for us to connect with the citizens, the community, and talk about the value of water and what we do for the community as well. So in 2023, you may have seen, I've seen many of you at some of the events that we had our water bar at, Downtown Days, Oktoberfest, Wings for Water, served over 4,500 cups of water at Downtown Days alone. I know a lot of citizens were grateful, filled up their water bottles, a lot of pets that came through as well. It was warm those days, so it was good to have some fresh H2O for folks to be able to use. But also, served over 400 gallons of water at Oktoberfest, which was still a good amount of water, given the weather that we had. Had to shut down a little bit early being able to do that, but people were still thirsty. So we were there and being able to do that. But the most important thing, I think, as well, is that we had staff that volunteered over 350 hours to community organizations back into the City of Lee Summit, which is something that I'm very proud of because you see it at every level of the utility. Every division was represented. Everybody knows the importance of what we do for the community and what it means to be able to tell our story and tell the value of water and being able to do that. So while maintaining and doing all these things like Jeff was talking about with the amount of bills that go out and the water main break, it takes a lot of people. We got 70-plus F T Es, a lot of faces behind all that, making that happen. And because we were successful in doing all those things and balancing that and had the leadership of our director, Mark Schoffler, at the helm, pointing us in the right direction, we were able to get some recognition from that. So with that, I'm going to call Ryan Murray up, who I'm sure most of you are familiar with. We also have, as you're aware, we survey our customers on our service every year. And so we got some recognition based on our survey that we completed last year.
All right, thanks, Mayor and Council. I'm sure you're getting sick of seeing my face, I'll make a brief. At E T C Institute, we like to honor and recognize some of our higher-performing organizations throughout the community. This is a national award that'll go out to anybody who really exceeds kind of that national benchmark for the overall quality of customer service provided, overall value that residents feel that they receive for the services, and the overall quality of customer service provided by the organization, the overall quality of service provided by the organization. In order to kind of meet that threshold, to be in the top 10% of all those communities we've surveyed over the last year, you need to reach a combined composite score of about 210 in those three categories. The overall score, the possible score is 300. So you need to average a 70 in all those scores. City Lee Summit Water Utilities was able to get a 216, which actually rates just barely, you know, eight points over our threshold, but 28 points over the national average. So the, the Water Utilities has really exceeded their expectations in terms of the delivery of service, the overall quality of service. And I think most importantly, as a city utility, the overall value that residents really feel like they get for that service. And as we become more of a community or customer-minded organization in some aspects of municipal governance, it's really important, I think, to highlight and really, like we're doing here, awarding exceptional performance in those key areas. And it really is a reflection of staff's time and hard work poured into this because this is really a resident survey, and so it's really a grade card from residents. So it's really that, that customer feedback that we can get from folks, and it's really great to be able to, to come here and honor another local organization for that. So I'm pleased to be here, and you should all be pleased of all the hard work that Lee Summit Water Utilities is doing for the city.
Fantastic, thank you.
But wait, there's more. Although Advanced Utility Systems is not here to recognize our Water Utilities Department, I did want to create awareness that, so Advanced Utility Systems, what that is, is the software platform that Water Utilities uses for customer information purposes. Advanced Utility Systems, their, their executive team chooses one utility each year that they would like to highlight for outstanding work in their community and outstanding service to their customers. So this feeds on what Dom was sharing with you, was I think through what they look for to, to recognize a utility, elevating customer relations through community engagement. You wouldn't think of a utility creating more awareness about what they, the services they provide and the value they bring to, to the community. They have a marketing plan. Water Utilities and their strategic plan has an intentional marketing plan for that customer engagement and customer relations. That's a big deal. They put in place a WebEx Contact Center for customer service purposes. So this is the interaction with, you heard him reference, C S Rs, Customer Service Representatives, the public interface with the, with the public. An online utility payment portal that's been put in place. Dom mentioned the water bar and all the community service volunteer errors that are going into this. And then we just heard from Ryan with their annual customer service satisfaction survey, which is a big deal too. So kudos to, to the team for also being recognized by Advanced Utility Systems and, and their recognition of, of the efforts that go into play. So congratulations to the team.
Thank you. Congratulations.
So before we leave you here today, we do actually, these are both team awards. And as I mentioned, they were given because every person in the utility at every level has a role to play in obtaining these awards. And we actually have some staff here with us tonight representing some of those 70 faces that are behind these numbers and this recognition. So I'll just take a moment because they're the real reason why this recognition is possible. So definitely wouldn't want to miss an opportunity for that.
Sarah Miller, Community Relations. Stacy Higgins, Customer Service Supervisor.
Dana R. Curry, Contract and Records Management Specialist.
James Bailey, Instrumentation and Controls Tech.
Tim Mathis, Maintenance and Asset Management Supervisor.
Brent Di, Assistant Utility Manager.
Michael Riley, Operations and Maintenance Manager.
And I think last but not least, hopefully, Assistant Director of Business Services, Brent Voice.
So let's give her a round of applause, please. And then one last mention before I leave. I do see a member of our Water Utility Advisory Board, Cinder Raider as well, who's also a part of our team, as another aspect, so we want to give her a round of applause. Thank you.
Mr. Bennett? Okay. Thank you. You got a great department there and great leaders to present, so thank you. Oh, Councilmember Demora, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to congratulate Water Utilities on the awards. Thank you all for coming. You know, I think, I think the, the catchword here is outstanding. Outstanding, outstanding services, outstanding work, everybody from Hamlin Road to the meter readers, to the technicians, and, and I have to really give kudos because I, I've seen them work and that's, and I was surprised, 194 water breaks. I mean, that is incredible. And, you know, I'm not good at math, but that's almost one every other day. And you could drive around the city and, I mean, they, they, of course, you could always see the new asphalt or whatever, but they don't leave a trace. They do a good job. But everybody does a good job. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you. Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you. I just also wanted to say thank you. I know when we had the Subzero temps, the crew was out repairing water main breaks, and I don't know how they did it, but it was definitely appreciated. So thank you for everything. And you guys probably saved my four-year-old from debt. There was, she was, not really, but she was so hot and she was complaining of being so thirsty at, what's it called, the thing? Not, yeah, Downtown Days. And then we saw the little water thing and we stopped and we got water. So then, then she was fine and was ready to continue on. So I love that you guys do that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, appreciate you all coming tonight as well. All right, we will go to the next presentation, which is the Downtown Market Plaza Financing Plan? No? No, we're on the Public Safety Sales Tax Initiative. Do you want me to take a break, everybody? Good? Okay, keep going. Public Safety Sales Tax Initiative update. Mr. Dunning, looks like you're leading the way.
I'll kick us off, Mayor. Thank you, Mark Dunning, City Manager. Wanted to provide you, the mayor and the council, with an update of what we've been able to accomplish through the Public Safety Sales Tax. But in, in addition to you all, we recognize many members of the community also would like to know what, what we have been working on with the Public Safety Sales Tax. So I'll, I'll provide an overview here. I'll turn it over to Chief Snyder, then Chief Forbes, and then, then I'll do a quick rack up, wrap up. So in April of 2022 is when the citizens voted in the one-half cent Public Safety Sales Tax. And, and what you see here on your screen is, I'll, I'll say, the, the general areas of focus that we committed to use that Public Safety Sales Tax towards if that, if that vote were successful. Attraction of, of quality candidates to work within public safety here in the community. We want to retain our existing personnel that are experienced and know Lee Summit well. We want to train, provide a focus on the proper training. We want to train, provide a focus on the proper training for our public safety folks, and then equip them with the tools they're going to need to be successful and to protect this community. So those are the, I'll call them the four pillars, four areas of focus that we are looking to invest the Public Safety Sales Tax. So when we consider the Public Safety Sales Tax as a source, what we're really saying is we want to enhance our current levels of public safety. And that's what we've tried to do through these enhancements that both Chiefs will share with you here in a moment. So a quick look at how Public Safety Sales Tax is performing. We just completed our mid-year projections, and this is the first full year that we've realized Public Safety Sales Tax revenue. So what you can see here is that we budgeted about 6.5 million mid-year, 13.1 million for a full year, so I'm looking top-down. What you can see in our actuals so far, mid-year, is we're right on target. But what you'll see is the sales tax and the use tax, some nuances there. We're seeing more use tax right now, and we're trying to dig deeper into what may be the cause of that. But overall, we're right on target with what we anticipated for revenues. And then down below, you can see for our assumptions, as we finish the full year, we're anticipating 5.2 increase over what we budgeted, so about 684,000 in addition to what we had originally anticipated and budgeted for. So we're in good shape with regard to revenues for the Public Safety Sales Tax. When we look at our mid-year expense projections, you can see that we're a little under from expending the funds in a way. I will share with you this, we intentionally went into our first few years of Public Safety Sales Tax budgeting to be a little conservative. We originally thought that this Public Safety Sales Tax would generate around 10 million in all actuality. It's more like 13 million. So you can see what we budgeted there, and then over to the right where we're projecting to end up. I think that both Chiefs will probably hit on some of those points as to why, you know, we're not quite on target with utilization of those resources. But all in all, we're on a good track right now. Mid-year projections on the first full year of what we've anticipated with this tax. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Snyder, and he'll take you through the fire initiatives and enhancements, and then Chief Forbes will follow him.
Thank you, Mike Snyder, Fire Chief. Just kind of referencing that last slide, you'll notice that police were budgeted about 5.4 million for that fiscal year, and fire was about 7 million. That is 100% attributed to the live-fire training facility. We had planned that in the prior fiscal year. It was unable to get completed during that fiscal year, so those funds were then transferred into this year. So our budget actually for this year is right around that 5.5 million as well with that transfer of funds. I am excited to report to you, as we toured the city and educated the public on what our initiatives would be, that we have either completed from the fireside or are implementing everything that was on that list. The items that you're seeing highlighted here today, we were able to hire seven personnel that put an ambulance in February 23. The ambulance went in service in June of 2023, filling out our complement of ambulances to have one at each and every one of our fire stations. The next major initiative is the 12 firefighters that were hired to staff the eighth fire apparatus in the first expansion in many, many years. That ladder truck actually went into service in 2023, and you can see a few pictures of the staff. That was a very daunting task, to hire 25 personnel in addition to all of the replacement personnel due to retirements and so forth and so on. So really a testament to our staff, the planning that went into that. It's not just hire personnel and put them on the streets, it's several weeks of orientation on 40-hour shift. Then they move into an orientation schedule with on-the-job training over another three-month period. Typically, an employee is fully released in all capacities of the fire department, firing EMS at the end of four months to five months. Other initiatives, the things that aren't necessarily seen on the roads each and every day. We have ordered the additional fire rescue boat. If you recall, we had one that was in service, we actually replaced it, or were replacing it as well. It is falling right in line with all other apparatus acquisitions that we've been faced with over the last several years with its about an 18-month build time. So those should be showing up before the end of this year. Fire station alerting, I spoke to HeartSafe Alerting Systems. That should be coming for the Finance and Budget Committee next month, as well as the City Council for consideration. Very excited to have that. It will integrate with our computer-rated dispatch system to speed up that process as well, and then alert our firefighters at a much safer capacity than how we do today with large tones, loud tones that, they call them HeartSafe for a reason, so I'll leave it at that. The live-fire training facility being located at Fire Station Number 7, that is the exterior shell as it was seen a couple days ago. They are starting to put the brick veneer on it. That's going to provide us with multiple opportunities of different types of scenarios. And we're anticipating a completion date of March to April of 2024. For those interested, I know that the local union put on a Fire Ops 101 class many, many years ago. I am hearing talks of that again, so I can definitely see this being an integral part of that. In addition to the building itself, so this is Class A, so ordinary combustibles, we'll be smoking it up and burning those types of materials inside of it to train our personnel, putting them in real-life scenarios. We also have multiple Class B props that were purchased as part of that $1.7 million expense, being a small Cessna airplane, car, so we can have multiple types of car fires out there, dumpsters, barbecue grills, anything that we can do to create multiple scenarios for our personnel to learn from. The last is the three-shift inspectors investigators. It goes right in line, as all of these do, with either recommendations from our peer assessment standard cover or our strategic, community-driven strategic plan. One of the divisions that we were told to look at, the workload of that, and see if we could expand, was our Prevention Division. We have put these personnel into service, they also began effective November of 2023. It's really been exciting. As I've spoke, prevention doesn't stop at 5:00 PM each night. Fires occur after 5:00 PM, et cetera, so this has really provided us with a great resource for our shift personnel, as well as those other functions that our Prevention Division would typically come in from off-duty to complete. So very excited about their progress as we move forward. A few other items. Some of these items that we have are not just one-time expenses. If you recall, when we did our labor agreement, we put in play a potential wage plan that could assist us in attracting and retaining our employees. Obviously, those wages don't go away, so that is accounted for in the annual expenses. We did purchase, as you know, we do many community events and we stand by for that, a UTV ambulance. And the specific reason for that is, is today we do have UTVs, gators, if you will, but they're open to everybody to see. This is going to provide us the opportunity to provide a little more privacy to individuals, for instance, at our downtown events, if they do have the need for medical care. We've been implementing a very proactive approach to policymaking program called Lexipol. It's very familiar in the police world, it's really just transitioned into the fire world for the last several years. But those that work in our profession, we tend to be very reactive in nature when it comes to creating policies and procedures. And this is truly a proactive system that really looks at state and federal, state and local laws and how we need to implement those, and then best practices across the nation. So we began that process several months ago. It'll probably be about a 12- to 18-month implementation process. Each and every year, we're going to fund some health and wellness improvements. This year, we were trying to standardize the equipment that we use for our personnel to be ready and prepared for their workouts. That has started to come in in the last several weeks, so we're excited to see that. And it's been great to see the excitement of the personnel to know that they have very similar equipment from station to station to utilize for that. Something else that we are implementing right now is Priority Dispatch. It's emergency medical dispatching, the electronic version. We have been providing emergency medical dispatching services for a long, long time, but unfortunately, never caught up with today's technology, and this is doing that. And we are also implementing emergency fire dispatching. It allows our communication staff to utilize standard questions to ensure that they're asking the appropriate questions to provide that information or direction to the emergency caller, and then that information to our personnel as they go in route. We anticipate that going live to July of 2024. So lots of things have happened, lots of things continue to happen. Excited for the future opportunities that this will provide as well. With that, I will turn it over to Chief Forbes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. With Dom Bennett's enthusiasm, I was going to see if he'd do my presentation, but he left, so that didn't work out. So on the Police Department side, we have instituted a mental health liaison. It's Officer Mike Iceberg, who's pictured here with our co-responders. This position has greatly aided our efforts to expand mental health services and really enhance our partnerships with outside organizations like Rediscover. In fact, we had planned on purchasing a mobile crisis response vehicle for mental health services to underserved parts of our community. And fortunately, Rediscover received some grant funding for that particular purpose, and we no longer have that need, so that partnership continues to flourish. One thing you'll hear me talk about quite a bit, and Chief Snyder referred to it slightly, was the challenge with hiring and recruiting. I would characterize it as a little more extreme in law enforcement than fire. We have many plans to expand our crime reduction team and expand our communications unit, and it's been extremely difficult to fill those expanded positions, as well as keep up with individuals who've retired or moved on from the agency. We have made progress. We are currently 12 officers vacant out of 163 total, which other chiefs in this metro area would be very jealous about. But it's still very much a struggle. As Chief Snyder alluded to, we also made enhancements to our work agreement and pay structure, and that has helped. But we found out quickly that other agencies asked for copies of our work agreement. One week after, the ink was dry, and have subsequently either caught up or surpassed in a lot of cases what we're able to accomplish. So it's very competitive, the environment, for sure. But we are still making good progress, to the extent that our field training officer positions in both communications and in patrol and the police officer positions are full. They can't take on any more recruits to train. So we're headed in the right path, for sure. But one of the things we want to do is expand our crime reduction team, which of course is our problem-solving team, to allow seven-day-week coverage of the city to address whatever problems arise in the city. What we have decided to do because of the recruitment challenges is expand the current team until we get to a point where we can break it up into two different teams with two different sergeants running them. So our current team is benefiting first. Communications, we have 11 vacancies out of 22, which sounds horrible, but it's actually more staffing than we've had in a while, because that includes a lot of expansion positions. So we're no longer in super emergent circumstances where we're scrambling to have coverage in our 911 center. It's still a challenge, we're still going through difficulties, but our new communications supervisor, I would like to give her a shout-out, and some of our staff are being extremely aggressive at recruiting, and it's paid significant dividends. We also do plan, I think I'll go to the next slide, to add an additional police district. Our original thought was to create a theft reduction unit that would concentrate quite a bit in our shopping areas, but partially in our neighborhoods too. And we still want to do that, but of course, that's tied to recruitment as well. I'll give you an example of the impact of that, though. Our crime reduction team spent essentially just prior to Black Friday of 2023 through the holiday season in the retail shopping corridors in Lee's Summit, working with loss prevention, and netted 44 arrests, 181 warrants, generated 34 reports, and recovered over $48,000 worth of stolen property. So they make a huge impact. We have lots of very nice places to shop in Lee's Summit, and we don't like when people come and don't want to pay for what they shop for here, so we try to work hard at that. Virtual reality training system, we've done extensive amounts of research. The holdup on this is housing, where we're going to put it. There are two types of systems, the virtual reality goggles and the screen systems. Not sure if any of you have used the goggles. Some people are fine with them, some people get nauseous and they just don't work out. So we're really favoring the screen-based system. But ideally, we want to put that in a location where we can just leave it up and not have to break it down every time. We're really taking a hard look at the joint operations facility that we're planning on building behind the police station, along with fire admin, to potentially have a training center where we can put that and maybe some virtual reality driving simulators that fire is interested in, too. Hope I didn't let the cat out of the bag for that, Chief Snyder. Our next plans, too, let's see, I have a slide for that, yes. Some things that we have accomplished, we do have a new community interaction officer. We are actually selecting that officer now, we currently have two, we're expanding that to three. And if you're wondering why we're prioritizing that, our community interaction officers act as our recruiters. They go to a lot of recruitment fairs, they have one coming up at the University of Kansas next month that actually targets women in law enforcement, so we're excited about that opportunity. So we think by adding a third CIO, it'll help us to get more people in the door and keep that hiring pump primed. Additionally, just to give you a little look into the future, we believe what we're going to do is expand our community interaction officers to four and have two of them serve the north half of the city, and two of them stationed in the south substation when it is complete, to serve the south half of the city. So give community access to those officers throughout the city, so we're excited about that. We are also looking, and we have added a records clerk supervisor, doesn't sound exciting. However, we have increased needs in our records unit, particularly with the advent of body-worn cameras and requests for video. We often have to go through those videos and redact things that we can't let the public or the media see, juvenile issues, things of that nature. So that's been very helpful. You'll notice, we've hired quite a few civilians. We have an easier time hiring civilians than we do police officers and dispatchers. That includes an animal control officer, we have added staffing in animal control. We did add a operations captain, who is overseeing our second shift in our crime reduction team officers. This was a position, along with the evidence and property technician, that we actually reclassified years ago to meet other needs and discovered we still needed those positions, so we've been able to backfill those and gain those back. We have a mobile response vehicle coming this spring. It's on order, it's essentially a Ford Transit van with heavy amounts of technology in it, as you can see from the screen. It's useful for assorted operations like crisis negotiations. We'll be able to run drone operations out of it to search for missing persons or wanted persons who have escaped capture. We can also use it for special events, Downtown Days or Oktoberfest, to use that technology to help keep individuals safe. So we're excited about obtaining that. The Real-Time Crime Center is something I'm extremely excited about. It is taking all the technology that we have and kind of focusing it with our crime analysts to monitor the city in real-time and let officers know of issues as they arise. Just tonight, I saw a suspicious vehicle go up to the top level of the parking garage. Captain Schaefer and I pulled up the camera system and looked at the cars and verified, yeah, it was pretty suspicious, so we got a patrol car over there. That's a very rudimentary example of what these individuals would be doing for us. I just wouldn't have to do it during council meetings.
You still got it.
What's that, sir?
You still got it.
Yes. Well, I still get very suspicious, I'll just say that. So we do have an analyst hired. We used to have two police officers as analysts, and the trend is to civilianize analysts. And so we have done that with one of the positions. We probably will do that in the future with the other one, too. We hired an analyst who has experience on the Johnson County side, who came over to Lee's Summit, so we're glad to have her. We're evaluating software for the Real-Time Crime Center. And the Bond Project is actually going to, in Phase 2 of the Police Department renovation, provide the space for that to, when we move communications from the building. We're not necessarily putting them in the communication spot, but it'll just help free up some safe force. A 3D crime scene scanner is another thing, it's like, what is that? It is a really neat piece of technology that we've updated that allows us to, in mere minutes, take a 3D virtual scan of an entire crime scene. We can use it in court to do fly-by or fly-through demonstrations of what the crime scene looked like. They used a 3D crime scene scanner in the ice house right before it was removed to maintain it for prosperity, so it does all kinds of stuff like that. We use it for crash scenes, crime scenes, whatever it may be. One thing that is not on the presentation, too, we have instituted wellness programs very similar to what fire does. Just this year was the first time that we had Just this year was the first time that we had both civilian and police officer staff available to conduct physical wellness exams with a licensed provider, pretty much full-body scans to determine the effects of stress and other conditions. And it's been very beneficial to both us and the Fire Department, so kind of follow their lead in that regard, and it was very well-received. And so that was an important wellness initiative. So that kind of gives you a picture of what we've been able to accomplish, as well as some of the things that we're still trying to do. I will say there's a little bit of, if I'm looking at the silver lining in the clouds with regard to the personnel hiring challenges, is it's allowed us to have a little buffer of funding there that we probably need to make sure that if we have a down year or something along those lines, we'll be able to maintain these services that we've instituted. So we do want to fill these positions eventually, we will, so our expenses will, without a doubt, go up. But for now, that's been our chief challenge is hiring, but we're getting there. We're definitely getting there. So I think I'll pass it back to Mr. Dunning.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Real quick wrap-up, so we'll continue to use these areas of focus as we continue to budget and bring forward priorities for public safety enhancements through the public safety sales tax. So every time we consider something, I refer back to this slide. This is what, this is, I'll say, the platform that we communicated to the public when we went out to ask them to consider the public safety sales tax. So I wanted to hit that one more time. And then, next steps. Chief Forbes just mentioned this, recognizing that within the public safety sales tax funding, we do have some ongoing costs because we are funding some enhancements and additions of personnel. So that's why I mentioned that conservative approach. We do recognize that we need to build up a reserve, no different than how we go about budgeting within our general fund, to have that cushion, that rainy day fund, if sales tax does something that we wouldn't have anticipated. So that's our goal. Not that we're mirroring, you know, policy for the whole general fund. That's a whole different animal, if you will. But we are being mindful of that as we prepare public safety sales tax budgets coming forward. And we are tracking public safety sales tax. You may remember this from our budget presentation last year. We set that aside. We don't co-mingle it with the general fund as we do that presentation. That way, we're being pure with what we are trying to achieve through this public safety sales tax. So we're going to continue that same approach as we move forward. So thank you for allowing us the time to give you a quick update on what we've been able to accomplish and happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Edson.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get to you guys, I just, I think we need to thank the voters for passing that public safety sales tax, along with the bond issues. You know, eight years ago, this was a very different picture. We were bleeding firefighters and we were bleeding police officers, really, due to lack of pay and lack of training. And so the voters have really stepped up and shown what they care about. On the presentations, Chief Snyder. Well, first mark, Mr. Dunning. You know, Station 3 was completed during COVID and nobody got to see it. We've still never seen it. So I know I'm always asking for tours. Boy, it'd be great to go and tour Station 3, maybe before, like, the end of April. That'd be great.
I think I know a guy.
Okay, okay, if we can get that done. But I am just so pleased with everything that the Police and Fire Department have been able to do and step up. And I saw the lettering going up on Fire Station Number Four that's almost complete. Do you have a ribbon-cutting date on that or anything?
I would love to tell you yes, but as soon as I do that, something else will change. We are anticipating, though, sometime around the 1st of April for Station Number Four and the middle of March for Station Number Five. That's the tentative plans as of right now.
I noticed that it just said Lee's Summit Fire Station, and it didn't say, like, the Phyllis Edson Fire Station or anything. I was a little disappointed by that, frankly. Also, I have so many things written down. I hope, I was glad to hear that Fire Ops 101, it might make a comeback. I may be the only person on here who's done that. If you all get a chance to do it, it's a lot of fun. There's parts of it I wouldn't do because they were too scary. And as far as Chief Forbes, I'm glad, I'm sorry you're still down some officers, but maybe you shouldn't recruit at the University of Kansas.
We don't mind stealing from other states' council members.
Oh, okay, all right. There's a great university, like, too, I've stayed in there.
That's true. We've done plenty of recruitment there, too, so we don't limit ourselves, that's for sure. The first time you do, you see your recruitment numbers go down, but that's a good point. We'll definitely do that.
Well, I'm just so glad I got to, I'm so glad I got to hear this presentation. I almost sat here and cried during the middle of it, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Demoral.
Thank you, Mayor. My comments, sentiments are very, very close to what Councilmember Edson was saying. It was seven years ago for me, eight years ago for Councilmember Edson, it was tough. It was tough. We went through, and you talk about PTSD, I wouldn't, you know, I mean, it was tough. And to see the presentations from the Fire Department, Police Department, and the progress that we have made, and, you know, hats off to the leadership that have been forward-thinking and brought us to this level. And, you know, for everyone listening to this presentation, by the way, both presentations were great. It takes years to get to the point we're at. And personally, I am happy to be able to have been on one side, you know, not the implementation, but maybe making some of this stuff happen. And it's for a good, good, good end result, and we're going to continue to push forward and continue, you know, to give the firefighters, the Police Department, the police officers, the tools that not only make their jobs more efficient, but it keeps the citizens of our great city safe. And I do want to also say thank you to all the voters that have been supportive of public safety in Lee's Summit, Missouri. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to say thanks. I love where we are, where Police and Fire are right now. And as everyone's mentioned, I lived it. My family lived it, lived how terrible it was in the city for first responder families for a long time. So I love where we are now, and thank you to Chief Forbes and Chief Snyder. I know that we would not be here without you guys. So it was cool to listen to all this stuff. I could listen to it forever, but, yeah, everyone else would probably be bored, so thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, seventh ambulance, nine firefighters, a new fire ladder truck, 12 more firefighters, water rescue boat, the police, on the police side, behavioral response, that's, I love hearing about that. And the, and the communications staffing going up, and I know it's been a challenge, but it's come a long way, so I'm very happy, too. Mr. Dunning, they have, the police have this community interaction officer. Yeah.
Heard that term somewhere.
I know. That's like, you know, every department, or every, I mean, the police, do you have a community interaction officer? Interesting. And you got, you're going to have four. Wow. I think, I like this philosophy here, the community interaction officer. I don't know if we need one of those eventually, but I like the sound of it, so. I think we're all very proud, Mr. Dunning, very proud, so thanks for using our tax dollars wisely and for safety and where it's, where we wanted it to go and where we told the voters it would go, so. Any further comment, counsel? Thank you, sir. Yeah, let's take a quick break. We'll come back at 20 till 8:00, so come back at 7:40. Hey, hey, that's only 16 minutes.
Welcome to the Lee Summit Sign Department. We are going to walk you through our process from start to finish. We make signs as needed here. It's not like we just go out into the field and place the speed limit sign here, no parking here. Our traffic engineers, they go through and they'll do field studies. They'll send us down an engineering work order for us to go out, place new signs or remove signs as needed. Coming from the material, our blanks come in, and they're just aluminum blanks. We can put our white, our red, our, you know, our fluorescent yellow-green, whatever. And basically, what it looks like is just that there. Throw it up into the roller. And once we got it covered, take it to our work table here, and Tim will cut the corners, cut all the access off where it's lined up right. As far as the plotter and the software that we use, there's a street name sign there, and he's going to go ahead and print that out on the plotter so you can see the plotter and how it operates and runs. There are standards for the height, even just on letters on the sign blank. Basically, what we have on the computer there is, it's pretty much set up to those. And it goes through, it's got a very small but sharp needle that goes through and cuts everything out, letter by letter. Once that's done cutting, our next stage would be bringing it over here. Currently picking out the signed letters right now. We call it weeding, or picking, or however you want to call it. Next, putting it on the transfer tape. Then after it's taped, we bring it over to the roller. That's where we apply it to the actual sign blank. And we'll roll it through one time just to get the air bubbles out. And the last stage is basically just taking the transfer tape off the front of it. And there's a finished product of a street name sign. We'll take you out to the field and show you our process that we go through. We're going to go out and follow our sign guys, get something installed for you. This is where we check our underground utilities. Tim, you got AT&amp;T?
AT&amp;T is back here.
EverG, Google, so we should be good to go. We normally put all of our stuff together out in the field. Then, once the base is installed, we'll go ahead and put the post in there. We've come up to perfect. And that's how we do it. Simple, quick.
Traditionally, we think as police officers, those responding to law enforcement needs within the community. But honestly, we are there to serve our citizens, and our citizens do go into crises. They do have mental health crises, and we're being called to those scenes on a regular basis. In order to help serve those citizens better, we did initiate the Crisis Intervention Team Program. These are officers that are specially trained to de-escalate crisis situations. Recently, we've brought co-responders onto the scene, licensed, qualified, mental health professionals housed within our Police Department, and they respond with those officers directly to those scenes where a crisis is occurring so they can interact with that citizen and get them the help they need right there on that scene.
The co-responders are either a bachelor or master level in a behavioral health-related field. They wear plainclothes. They don't carry weapons or anything like that.
I have a police radio that I listen to all day, listen for, you know, those key words, mental health, behavioral health, crisis.
There's a lot of officers that just call for me. I have my own radio number.
I also have the ability to self-dispatch to them on, say, 982, then route.
Officers en route, 914.
So typically, I arrive after they've made it safe. I'll make contact and get kind of the rundown, and then I just kind of jump right in.
Like, hey, you know, my name's Allison, I'm a mental health professional, I'm here to help you. I'm not here to take you to jail or arrest you.
Sometimes, all a person needs is a voice, someone neutral, someone outside that, you know, can listen. I do a lot of safety planning, including family, their support network, who's close to you. If they're home alone, who can come over and hang out with you today? Can we lock away your sharps? Can we put up your meds? Do you need meds? Can we get you over to the urgent care to get you assessed for your medications? Some of them also are like, oh, I'm so glad you came, this made me feel so much better.
Our main goal as the co-responders is to, one, get people connected to the services that they need, and also divert from emergency rooms and jails.
And they almost get a different view of the police responding. That lets me know you care and the officers care.
Lee's Summit Police, can we help you?
My husband has...
In 2020, we had 722 mental health-related calls for service. 2022, by that time, 1,479. These mental health-related calls for service are increasing. How we're responding to that is increasing the number of Crisis Intervention Team officers we have available, as well as the number of co-responders we have available to respond on these calls.
So what I think is important for the community to know about the co-responder program is that we're here, we exist. All you have to do when you call 911 is ask for us, you know, say, hey, I want a co-responder to respond to this crisis, and we'll go. I was really struggling about eight years ago, my personal journey with mental health, and I met some amazing social workers and amazing programs that have helped me get to where I am today. I really couldn't see myself doing anything else. We want to help, and that's what we love to do.
So at a client, we got a call, she had some suicidal ideations, and she really felt that she had nobody. And, you know, in getting to know her story, getting to know, who comes around and sees you? Well, then we found a support person, and they responded immediately, and we made a plan. I called back and checked on her in an hour, and then I checked on her in two hours. We were able to get her into the additional services to where she talks to someone every week or more. I just took a person that really just thought they had nobody, and nobody would show up for them and show them you do. And you'll be amazed, who is in your corner if you just simply say, I need a little help.
When the person called on the phone, she said that there was a dinosaur walking down her road. Of course, we had to go out and check that out. We get out there, and it was a big African tortoise, probably 60 pounds, walking down the road. When they walked, they really stand up tall, so I could see why she thought it was a dinosaur. I'm Rodney Wagner, I'm the manager of Lee's Summit Animal Control. So as you can see, we get all sorts of animals here. You have some guinea pigs off to the side. All the windows up here are animals that are adoptable right now. Every one of these dogs is ready to go and ready for adoption. And the same thing with our cats over here. A lot of cool cats in here now, so. So this is our three-acre lot we have out back, and this is where we do all the walk-in dogs, exercise. We also have a side yard off the side over there, so we can let them run loose. They can run together, and we have what's called play groups. Kind of like having a bunch of kids. Here's our vet room. We have a vet that comes out twice a week. This is our sally port where we bring the animals into. This is one of our animal control trucks, and we can hold up to six animals. We have a lift on the other side to put big animals in. We actually have temperature gauges in here and in the truck to tell us how hot it is. Once it gets to a certain temperature, we bring all the animals back here immediately. So this actually has traps in it, but we do a lot of wildlife trapping. I mean, a lot, so. Bats, pot-bellied pigs, horses, cows, emus, a lot of reptiles. We had a citizen one time that had over 200 reptiles in his basement. Caymans and alligators in here that are four or five feet long, you can't keep those. And people do, and they're surprised when they can't keep them. I'm like, really? You're surprised you can't have an alligator in here? Our main goal here is public safety and also the safety of the animals. And we have very dedicated people back there, and they definitely stay here for the love of the animals, which also includes getting them adopted out. We'll have about 4,000 impounded animals a year, probably about close to 2,000 are dogs and cats. The cats and dogs, when they get impounded here, they go on a five-day hold, and then after the five days, if the owner doesn't show up, then we can put them up for adoption. Adopt a animal here is actually really simple. You just come in, look for whatever animal you're looking for, find the right pick. We have you go to the adoption room up there and see if you get along with them, you spend as much time as you want to in there. From that point on, it's just a matter of making sure they're spay or neutered and all their vaccinations up to par, and they're good to go. We have a very high adoption rate because we try everything our power to get animals adopted out. We have Heart of America, a humane society that we do a lot of adoptions through. And then we also have other groups. We have some people that literally will just look all over the country for some... And then we also have other groups, we have some people that literally will just look all over the country for somewhere for a dog to go. And we've sent dogs up into South Dakota, North Dakota, Washington State. So it's actually, it's a huge united effort to get all these animals home.
Tarzan's got lots of energy. Hazel's got a weird meow. Bellbell, she wants nothing to do with the other cats, she'll kind of get her grumpy face going.
And the good thing about the people here is that they get all their friends to get animals too. All of us have probably the limit of all the animals that we can have at home. You know, they are huge animal lovers. If it was up to the people here, we'd have 15 cats running around in here. We had a citizen one time out there, and he was bathing his two nine-foot-long boa constrictors in the front yard. Apparently, I was gardening some attention, and so we went out there and had to talk to him about that. Well, I do this job, dude, I love this job. I grew up on a farm, and taking care of that many animals, you can't help but like animals. This is just like fancy farming. You're just bringing animals in here, taking care of them, and finding them homes, and yeah, absolutely animal lover.
I'm Assistant Chief Jim Eden.
And I'm Battalion Chief Ben Hicks.
And today, we're at Lee Summit Fire Station 3. Fire Station 3 was part of the 2016 No Tax Increase General Obligation Bond for Public Safety Initiatives. The station was built and occupied in August of 2020. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, we've not been able to give tours or have an actual ribbon-cutting. So we want to invite you in today to give you the opportunity to see what goes on within the Lee Summit Fire Department Station.
Let's go take a tour. This is our admin side of the facility. We use this side mainly for offices. We have a lot of work during the day, whether it's training, or during reports, or just generally taking care of the shift that we need to do. At this particular station, Station 3, we do have an assistant chief that works out of here. That person has their own office where they need to manage what's going on throughout the day with the shift and staffing, and as well as running calls out of here. The captain has their own office as well. What the captain does is, at this specific station, is in charge of both the fire truck that's here as well as the ambulance. And so with all those personnel responsibilities, as well as running calls and reports, that's where they work out of. And generally, for the rest of the crew, which is somewhere around five to six individuals, we have rooms where I report, and we have additional training rooms and other rooms where people can work. Walking into our living area, I think it's important to recognize that we work 48-hour shifts. So in the evenings, after 5 o'clock, after work is done, we may have the opportunity to catch a game or something else, as long as we're not running calls. And this gives us the opportunity to do that. When we go into our kitchen, I think this gives you a great reason to know why we go to the grocery store. When you see fire trucks at the grocery store, what we're doing. Also, for two days, working for 48 hours, we buy all our meals at the grocery store, and then we come in here and cook, just like you guys do at home. So everybody has their own fridge on each shift, as well as their own pantry, and then we cook those meals here. Going into the sleeping side of things, we've got a couple of different things that are significant. We have our own laundry room, which again is important when we're here for 48 hours. The opportunity to wash and clean our clothes and bedding is very important for hygiene. And walking into where our beds are, we keep the kind of sleeping quarters over on one side of the building. It gives us both easy access out to where our fire apparatus are, as well as kind of keeping it a little bit quieter for those people that have been up all night running calls. We have 11 bedrooms here at this station. And the reason we built it with so many bedrooms is we want to give ourselves as a city the opportunity to expand. So if we need to put another apparatus here, or numerous other people working at the station, that's already in place as far as infrastructure goes, and we don't need to go back and try to make it bigger or better. And that's really important for us, especially because the old station was so small. Back out on the apparatus floor, we have doors facilitated as many places as possible, so that way when we're sleeping at night and a call comes out, we can make our way out fairly quickly to get out onto the truck if we need to and run a call. On the other side of the station, we kind of have other stuff that we may want to keep separated if we want to. Physical fitness is very important to us as firefighters. So in order to better ourselves and make sure we're as healthy as we can to do this job, we have our own gym facility here that we kind of go throughout the day when we can and get an opportunity to come in and work out. Our goal, when we run calls, when we get back to the station after calls, our goal is to get ready to go back as soon as we can to run another call. So we have the opportunity or capability here to fill up our air tanks. You see firefighters, where the big air tanks on their backs, and they use those in a fire, we can come back and fill those up and make sure that we're ready to go again when we're wanting to go run another call. We have our own workshop here, we work on a lot of our tools and making sure that everything's clean and operational, and this gives us the capability to do that. Again, to make sure that we have everything we need and we're as capable as we can be running calls throughout the city. Cancer prevention is very important in the fire service right now. Because of that, we have an extractor machine. And what this does is gives us the capability, when we come back from a fire, we can put our bunker gear into this machine and get all that really nasty crud off of our gear.
All right, welcome back, everyone. Bringing the meeting back to order. We are now on presentations, the final one. This is the Downtown Market Plaza Financing Plan. And it looks like Mr. Elem is going to start us off.
Mayor, Members Council, Ryan Eelm, Assistant City Manager, thank you again for your time. And myself and Mr. Bushak are going to kind of walk through the construction financing plan for the Downtown Market Plaza. I think everybody knows, we've been talking about this project for a long time. We've got what we've referred to as GMP 1, which is the Underground Utility Work under construction currently. And I'm just going to go ahead and dive right in. We're not going to spend a lot of time tonight talking about the site plan and reviewing the renderings and the videos associated with that. If anybody would like to see those, though, they are all online at the Market Plaza website that you can get to by going through Thrive or Explore Downtown Lee Summit Marketplace. Lots of cool stuff up there, and that's going to get updated a lot more frequently as we move forward. So I wanted to start off and just talk about some recent accomplishments, a lot of these we're already aware of. But construction beginning on this, on that utility package, was a really big deal. The demolition, as you know, as you can see outside, we've got some holes in the ground, and we're trying to work through that. The storm sewer installation, that's, sounds very small, very easy, that's a very major aspect of the project overall that's currently going on. And then what we call AT&amp;T North and East Lot, this was probably one of the biggest accomplishments recently, was that we were able to work with AT&amp;T and close on the remaining property that kind of goes around the facility there, which really opens up the ground to allow the project to really be what the project needed to be, from an access standpoint around the market, as well as parking. So that was a very significant effort, and can't thank everybody that worked on that enough to make that happen.
It only took five years?
Seven, I think.
Seven years.
But that was a, very excited about that, to be able to have that impediment out of the way. So, GMP 2, if you recall from some of our previous conversations, we had originally planned on having GMP 2, or Guaranteed Max Price 2, on this council agenda this evening. We did go out to bid, we received bids back. Bids are within our expectations as to where we had those. But given some of the timing of the construction project overall, it actually worked out better for us to go back and have some additional conversations with some of the subcontractors about some pricing specifics, and then have that come in when we call what we're calling GMP 3, which is the Offsite Utilities. So that way, we can end up having just one more package, everything will be buttoned up. But our numbers and everything were in line with our expectations. There's just a few contractual details that we want to make sure are really ironed out before we come back. So the plan for that is to come back in front of the city council on February 27th with the actual contract amendments. And there will be two, that will be GMP 2, which is the farmer's market itself, the plaza, all of the rest of the main components internal to the site. And then GMP 3, which is going to be Third Street and Johnson Street, improvements associated with that. But the final development plan and the building plans are approved. And we have some upcoming milestones that I just talked about. Third Street closure, Third Street's looking to close for a little bit of time, March 1st, to do some work out in the road. Building permit, you can see Second Street on there, and you can see the other dates. We're holding steady on a May 14th of 2025 for construction completion, when this all goes. Bunch of steps in between here, a bunch of different milestones. I will say that we're really analyzing the traffic closures in particular around downtown, and making sure that we've got ample notification for that, and that the traffic closures are as least impactful as they can be. Some of that tends to move on a daily basis. I believe we'll actually be talking about some upcoming closures that are related to this project, that are going to start next week, but they're going to be a little bit more intermittent for some utility work as we move forward. So, big picture-wise, project continues to move forward, and this is a very critical night tonight. Did you have something? I thought you said something, sorry. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to David, and we're going to start talking about some numbers.
David Bushak, Chief Counsel of Economic Development and Planning. Mayor, you mentioned earlier, a presentation's geared toward people that like numbers, so this is one of those. There's a lot of numbers. We tried to minimize the amount of numbers that we're showing you, but I thought we'd start with this slide, just to make clear what we're talking about tonight. There's a number of rabbit holes that we can always run down when we're talking about the downtown project. But our focus tonight is just the construction financing plan, which is the plan to fund all the costs associated with just the public components of the project, not the private components. And there's a twofold approach to this financing plan, using available cash, based on a decision that you can make, and then financing the remainder with debt. We're planning on issuing special obligation bonds to fund the remainder of the project costs, and we think that we should be able to take the maximum advantage of the city's AAA bond rating. That bond rating would not apply strictly to the issuance of special obligation bonds, because that's our rating for general obligation bonds. But because the city has such a good credit rating, we should, we're presuming that we'll receive the best interest rates, even though we'll be using special obligation bonds. I'll also mention that tonight with us is Sid Douglas and Megan Miller of Gilmore &amp; Bell. They're sitting behind me back here in the back row. They're a bond counsel. And then Columbia Capital Management, also our financial advisor. We've prepared this presentation after extensive discussion with them. I asked them lots of questions, they've answered all those questions for me to try to get ready for your questions here tonight. And a number of the slides that I have incorporate data from our financial advisor. The last introductory statement that I'll have is something that we've mentioned from time to time, but I think it's important to remember this point when you're talking about this financing plan, which is, we're not just talking about spending money, we're talking about making an investment in the community. The money that the city spends, both on a cash basis or through the issuance of bonds, is an investment in the property across the street. And we're presuming that the useful life of this improvement is beyond our lifetimes, 50 years, 100 years. This is an asset that will be in the city and in the downtown area for generations to come. And that's our focus with the financing plan that we've put together. So the next slide, then, this is identical to a slide that you saw in September when Mr. Eelm made a presentation to you and gave you an update. This is the projection of the costs of our uses for the funds that we need to generate for the project totaling about $41.9 million. Good news is that the bids have come in for these items, and our estimated costs, including the cost that we had projected back in September, look good. So these numbers are proving to be accurate as far as what we think the costs are going to be. Then this next slide, this is also a repeat of a slide that you saw in September. This is mainly to show you that we're continuing to target the amount of sources to match up with the uses and what the project is going to cost. And so that's what we're focusing on tonight, the unsecured sources. So now we get into the financing plan itself. The number at the very top, then, that's what we're calling our secured funding. Again, a repeat of a concept that you heard back in September. And I've noted that this is a combination of available cash and bills already paid. This is essentially money that's already been appropriated by the city council, with some monies that have been committed by the CID. And when I say bills paid, if you look across the street, you'll see that we're already doing work. So a good chunk of the money that you've already appropriated for this project, we're in the process of spending. So this represents not just cash available, it's your original appropriation minus what we're already spending across the street for the work that's occurring. The second line, then, this amount of the cash available from the sale of the Tudor Road property, it's public information now that that Tudor Road land sale was for $2.8 million. And then the AT&amp;T property across the street, the East Lot in the North area, we purchased for about $1.36 million. So this number here is essentially the remainder. We'll talk about this as an action point for you later, but there will need to be a budget amendment to appropriate this amount of funding to this project. Then we get into the actual financing plan, and that's these two lines here. One decision point for you to make, and we'll talk about this in more detail. How much cash would you like to appropriate from the General Fund Reserve, if any, for this project? And so for the purposes of putting this slide together to give you a snapshot, I put in here $5 million as a placeholder. This is just to illustrate the concept, and I'll talk about this in more detail in a moment. So then you compare that number to this number. Whatever you do not appropriate in cash, we need to finance the remainder through this bond issuance. So these two numbers here need a total of about $24.1 million to achieve the total sources that we're looking for. And then one other thing that I'll note here, this analysis gets a little complicated, but the CID has committed by contract, in our cooperative agreement with the CID, to fund an amount equal to $3.25 million, but over a period of 20 years. And their commitment is specifically $162,500 per year for 20 years. In order to finance that amount today, we have to factor in the interest costs and what it takes to produce a project fund today as a result of that payment stream coming forward in the future. So based on the calculations we received from our financial advisor, we can generate a project fund of about $2.1 million today, based on this revenue stream that would, when factoring in interest, would repay this principal amount. So, and this is where it gets a little complicated, but this $3.25 million CID commitment actually translates into $2.1 million today, when we factor in the financing associated with that. And I'll talk more about that in a little bit. So this next slide, same slide that I just showed you, but it's highlighting the two key things that we're going to focus on tonight. The decision that we're looking for you to make regarding any funding from the General Reserve, and then the remaining amount that goes into the bond issuance once you make that decision. That's what we're focusing on tonight. This next slide, then, goes into more detail about the unassigned general fund balance. You, City Council, approved a new policy in September of last year regarding the unassigned general fund balance that said it should be a minimum of 25% and a maximum of 25% of either the general fund operating revenues or expenditures, whichever is greater, based on the prior fiscal year. That's your new policy for the reserve fund. Last year, fiscal year '23, the expenditures were about $95.6 million. The unassigned general fund balance today, and this is updated data from the Finance Department, is $44.5 million, which is about 46.6% of the fiscal year '23 expenditure. So that's where things stand today. So to start putting that number in the context of the decision that we're asking you to evaluate, this is where the balance stands today, $44 million, that's about 46% of this amount last year, our general, our operating revenues, sorry, operating expenditures from last year. So if you decide to spend none of those monies, then the balance stays there. So if you decide to spend none of those monies, then the balance stays there. If you decide to follow your policy and you reduce that balance down to 35%, you would need to spend about 11 million. To reduce down to the floor of your policy 25%, you would need to spend about 20.6 million. So this kind of gives you a sense of the range of options that you're evaluating. You could stay where you are, which is above the policy that you set. You could reduce it down to the ceiling of the policy or you could reduce it down to the floor of your policy. That's sort of the range of options that you're considering. One of the questions that I asked our financial advisor is, when, when the city council is considering this decision, in order to maintain the city's AAA credit rating, what's a good rule of thumb? What should we be following? And their answer was, their evaluation of the sort of municipal landscape is, the cities that have a AAA bond rating generally maintain about a 30% reserve. So that's kind of the benchmark to look at. That's not an absolute rule. That's not a hard and fast rule. But they basically said for the, for the class of cities that maintain a AAA bond rating, their reserve is about at 30% or up, just to give you a sense of what that number looks like in the context of our AAA bond rating. So that's a decision point to, to make. And I'll talk about how we might go about making that decision in a moment. This next slide then starts to evaluate the, the bond issuance, and we get into some of the details. This is all data from our financial advisor, and I'll walk through what this means so you understand this. We're looking at the term, we're starting at the top with the term of the debt. So we're looking at 10-year, 15, 20, or 25-year, meaning that's the number of years it would take to repay this debt after it's issued. This is the interest rate that our financial advisor indicated we're likely to see based on the duration of this debt over 10, 15, 20, or 25 years. And as you'll see, the interest rate slightly ticks up over the longer payout period because that's at a greater risk to, to the bond buyers. Then as a benchmark to compare these, these different payout periods, I asked them to, to tell us, per 1,000, per 1 million dollars of debt that we issue, what's the annual debt service? So if you issue just a single 1 million dollar bond, what does it take to repay that bond? And this, this, this row is the answer. If it's over a 10-year period, it's $115,000 a year, 15, 20, and 25. And so over a 20-year period, for every 1 million dollars of debt that we issue, it takes $70,000 per year to service that debt and make that payment. The project fund that we had them analyze, and this is based on the previous slide that I showed you, we're initially focusing on a 19.1 million dollar bond issuance. But as I said, if you decide to put more cash into the project from the reserve, then this number goes down. And then this final row here shows what the annual debt service would be, assuming a 19.1 million dollar bond issue over the 10, 15, 20, and 25 years. And you'll see that we've highlighted the 20-year, and we think that that's probably a reasonable place to land for the repayment period of the bonds. We've talked with our bond counsel and our financial advisor. Everybody seems to be in general agreement that what you try to shoot for, for repayment period is that it lasts no longer than the useful life of the improvement. And in this case, as I said, we're focusing on a useful life that's, you know, 50 years or maybe 100 years if, if we maintain it well. And so looking at a 20-year repayment period is very reasonable in the context of the useful life of the improvement that we're, we're trying to fund in this case. And that's, everybody seems to agree that that's a reasonable place to land for this financing and the duration of this financing. And remember this number, this 1.3-ish number. I'll call back to this in a moment when I, when I talk about another data point. So one of the things that we wrestled with a little bit is, when you're trying to make this decision, how do you compare, what do you compare this to? Because we don't, we've never really undertaken a project like this before. And one way of thinking about this, maybe a framework of thinking, is how does this project and the financing decision that you're facing fit into the context of the downtown area as a whole? So the next slide, I'll show you a number, some numbers. And this is the area that we're looking at. The numbers I'm going to show you are calculated based on the red area, which is our core downtown area. And then the blue is the project area that we're talking about tonight. So this is the, some new information that might be useful for you. We calculated within the area that I just showed you, what are the annual property taxes that flow to the city every year? About 2 million. And then what are the sales taxes, accounting for all five of the city's sales taxes, flow to the city from the downtown area every year? It's about 1.52 million. So just from property tax and sales taxes from this area, the red area, it's about 3.5 million to the city. That might help give you a framework to compare to this number that you'll be wrestling with. What's the appropriate amount of cash to put into the project? What's the appropriate debt load? And you might start comparing this number to this number to get a sense of what revenues are generated for the city from the downtown area if you think about this project as a major asset for the downtown area as a whole. The bond issuance then, this is just some, to answer some of the questions that you might have about what is this bond issuance and what does it mean for the city? As I said, it would be special obligation bonds. We do have some precedent. We found some examples of the city issuing special obligation bonds in the past. I think the most recent one was back in 2004 for a 54-inch water transmission line from Kansas City to Lee Summit. That's, that's one example that our bond counsel found for us. These are bonds that would be issued by the city. No public vote is required, unlike general obligation bonds. Does require an annual appropriation of the city. So you, every year, you'd have to appropriate the number that I just mentioned to service that debt. We would be taking maximum advantage of our AAA bond rating without actually issuing GO bonds. And the first step, which you've actually already tackled, was a resolution of intent to signal that you're going to issue these bonds at some point in the future. You already passed that in November of last year. And it does take an ordinance, future action, to issue these bonds. So this brings us to the final slide. What are the action items for the city council? I mentioned the first one. You've already passed that in November of last year. That authorizes reimbursement from those bonds in the future to the extent that we need any reimbursement from the funds that we're expending today, which we don't at this point because we have sufficient cash to pay for what's happening across the street. Then the next action item would be a budget amendment. And in that budget amendment, you could tackle the appropriation of the remaining Tudor, Tudor Road land sale funds into this project fund. And then we'll be looking to you to make a decision on that number that I had an asterisk by. Is it a 5 million number? Is it an 11 million number? That, that's up to you to decide. And when you make that decision, we'd package that up into an ordinance that amends the budget to put those funds into what's called the Green Street Fund for the downtown project. And then the final ordinance would be an action to issue the special obligation bonds once you make that other cash-based decision. And the final thing that I will, final note that I'll end on is a timing. I'll talk about timing a little bit. So we're presuming that this decision, how much to assign from the general fund balance, is probably going to be made in one of two ways, and it's up to you. One option would be to take this to the Finance and Budget Committee in March to evaluate this decision in the context of potentially other uses of the reserve fund. So you can look at it holistically. That's one option. Second option would be for the full council to evaluate this question as a whole and make a decision. That could happen tonight. That could happen at some point in the future. That's up to you, and we can talk about that tonight. But from a timing standpoint, if we have your decision on this, this number here sometime in March, then we're confident that we could achieve a closing on the financing in May, which would solve all of our financial questions. When will we have enough money? If we proceed on this course of action, we'd have sufficient funds in May to fully fund the entire project. That concludes my initial discussion. Be happy to discuss and answer questions.
All right. Thank you. Okay, questions? Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few different questions for staff. One is, we've discussed a little bit in the past, I think, possibly using some CIP funds for the, basically what, what would be eventual CIP projects? I think Johnson Street and that kind of thing. Is that the kind of thing that that would be a source of funds to repay those special obligation bonds? Or is that a different line item? Or how would that work?
So the, the CIP funding is included in that, what we're considering the secured funding bucket currently. So it goes to, to pay for those existing public improvement projects.
Okay, good to know.
Talk about that in the context.
Sure.
So what Mr. Bushak just put on the screen here is really kind of the breakdown of, of that, those secured funds. So that 16 million number there. You can see there's been several appropriations kind of over, over the years associated with this project. A lot of those were from various land sales kind of over time. And you can see that we've got, as well as the 3.25 million commitment over 25 years from the downtown CID, they do have a cash commitment of $870,000 as part of that. And then the CIP funding is a separate line item there, and that goes to pay for specific items inside of the project.
Got that. This might even be a question from Ms. Wordleman. I'm not sure. We, we had a really interesting presentation in Finance and Budget Committee about how our city fund is being invested currently and that some of the bond rates are up so worry about to actually make more on our investments than we were previously. So if you were to take the money that's in the fund balance and put it out to bid for, for bonds like you guys do, how would the interest rate that we could make on that money compared to what we'd be paying on debt service? Does that kind of make sense? Like, do we, is it about equivalent? Would we make a lot less or?
Betty Wordleman, Finance Director. So I'm trying to remember that from the investment report, the recent investments that we've made are in the neighborhood of around, depending on the maturity, we are restricted to no more than five years. But it's around three to probably three and a half percent on average right now, going out to five years. Now, the interest rate on the bonds, of course, you're, you're talking about potentially a 20-year issuance on those. But the most recent interest rate indications on the bonds were roughly around...
Yeah, I've got a slide. Let me switch back to the slide that you can...
Okay. So you can see the interest rates across the top. So for 10-year, a 10-year issuance just shy of 3%. 15-year, 3.4. 20-year, 3.8 roughly. And 25-year, a little over 4%. So, you know, you might consider that ballpark. But you are looking at a much different maturity structure and our investments are permitted to be invested in.
So, so our investments, we might be getting a roughly equivalent interest rate, but we, we don't have the option to put them onto a 10, a 20-year or something like that, right? So we don't know what the interest rate would be in the future? Okay. That's, that's a good, good answer. I appreciate it.
But we, we, you know, as the money rolls back in, it gets reinvested, so...
But if interest rates fall in, in three years or four years, we might find ourselves not making very much on that at all.
That's a possibility, yes.
Which is like, whoa, because that's when you showed us the report. Like, that was what all of our investments from a few years ago, they were at like super low interest rates, like less than 1%. So there's, they always go up and down. Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, no, that's just helpful because I'm just trying to think in, in my mind, like, what's the opportunity cost of putting cash into this project right now that we could be investing somewhere else?
And one other point to consider, if we issue these bonds and interest rates decline, we always have options on how we can, we're prohibited from doing what we used to call advanced refundings. But we do have the ability to defe, defease bonds and potentially reissue to take advantage of those lower interest rates.
Sort of refinancing?
Yes, basically refinancing.
Okay. Well, that's good to know also. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, do you want to have this discussion more fully tonight as far as options? Or did you want to talk about taking it to Finance and Budget or?
Yeah, do you want to, what's your opinion as the Chair of Finance and Budget? Do you want to see it come through so you guys can vet it?
So I'm not going to be at the March Finance and Budget meeting, which I discussed at our last meeting. So kind of depends on what the committee wants to do. If you guys want to tackle this one without me, it doesn't hurt my feelings, but yeah. I'm looking at the other members of the committee to see if they have any...
Well, what were the timelines like? So, I mean, I feel like you should be a part of that conversation if we were going to do that. So what does pushing it to April do?
Sounded like you guys needed to have a, a direction in March, yeah.
About next week.
Do you want to have a special Finance and Budget meeting to discuss this? Because...
I mean, I think that would probably make sense if we were going to do that. I do think it's important that you're there.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine doing that or discussing it tonight. Either way, I don't want to keep you guys here on stuff.
I mean, I'm happy discussing it tonight as well. I, I think we'll probably flesh out a lot of different questions. I know I've got a lot of things kind of going through my head that I don't know that I'll get to the answers tonight or not. And I would say, you know, if March was a deadline, right? Or there was something that...
So not really a deadline. At this point, we're, it's more of a cash flow management issue. So like I said, we have funds appropriated. We have funds to pay the bills as they're coming in for the work that's being done. Once we hit GMP two and three, then we will start signing up for more costs than we have cash. We need to have the money available to pay the bills when they come in in a very simple, in simple terms. And so if we have a decision from you in March, we think we can complete the financing by May. And if you add another month to that decision-making process, then, you know, the financing's going to bump out another month, too.
Well, maybe we just flesh out some more questions and answers and discussions then.
We can talk, talk this out. Let's hear what the councilmembers' questions and comments are. Then we'll come back to it.
I saw the floor, yes? Okay. So I'm definitely open to putting more than the 5 million from the general fund reserve. I think, you know, we were very conscious when we established that floor and that ceiling that we wanted to keep that AAA bond rating. And so I think keeping us above 30% fund balance is good. I think somewhere between the 5 million that you put in this placeholder and 10 or 11 million would make sense in that that would keep us above that threshold but still have some cushion in case something else came up that we needed some funds for. I'm not dead set on that number, but I feel like somewhere in that, like, 7, 10 million makes sense given what our reserves are and how we want to maintain our bond rating and having a little bit of flexibility. But I'm definitely happy to hear from my colleagues what they think.
Thank you. Just trying to do numbers in my head. What's...
11 million is 35%.
95 million is the total.
30% would be right around 15 million balance, right? Halfway between that 35 and 25.
Okay. I got you. Okay, let's go, let's go around. Councilmember Felker.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And just a couple more questions just to help me understand a few things. So Mr. Bushak, when you talk about being able to have cash flow at your, if you will, at your fingertips, are we talking about having the entirety of the 19 million issued at once? Or would it kind of roll as well? Would it be something where we...
A single bond issuance.
Say again?
A single bond issuance.
Single one, so one time? And just for clarity, and one of the slides previously, when you talked about sources of tax revenue from downtown, from the area you used the property taxes, which I assume that 2 million's kind of a round number of some kind. We're really good if we're right there on the zeros, but...
I'm rounding.
Yep. No, no, I get it. And the sales tax, just for clarity, that 2.75, it can be used for any general matter? It's not earmarked for specific types of uses?
It's, so it's earmarked as those taxes are earmarked. So you've got the general sales tax, public safety, capital improvements, transportation and parks. And, and those specific ones can only be spent on those limited purposes.
And, yeah, just for, kind of for the public's awareness, that 2.75 is the general.
Correct, just to give you a sense of what revenue is produced for the city and the downtown area as a whole.
Got it. Because there's more on top of the 2.75% for those other earmarked issues or other purposes, 2.75. Maybe I'm misunderstanding what you said. Maybe I'm misunderstanding.
Yeah, so this is an aggregation of all five of our sales taxes together, 2.75 total.
Okay. Got it. So, so the 1.5, again, is going to have other earmarked purposes based on the source.
Right. So, so the appropriate portion of this can only be spent on parks and the appropriate portion on transportation, et cetera.
Very good. Okay. And so then, I guess, another piece of this, which I know this would be, maybe is not a data point that we can even create right at this point, but at some point, everything across the street's going to be built out. And I guess the assumption would be some of this ongoing, if you're thinking about what does downtown produce, some of the revenue would be derived from the project. Meaning, what we're in, what the city will be responsible for building, but as well as, you know, the surrounding developments that we anticipate would, we would hope would surround it.
So there is another discussion to be had at a later date, and I think that would be in the context of when a private project comes forward, proposed by the developer, and that's when we would start analyzing what taxes, property taxes, sales taxes, personal property taxes are generated within the four corners of the project for the city and for all the taxing jurisdictions, and what spillover effects does that have on the surrounding properties, the value of the properties in the downtown area? Does that increase sales by 1% in the downtown area, 3%? It's all, I think it's all going to have positive impacts, and everybody is pretty much aware of that. It's a little bit of a guessing game as to how much, but when we have a private project coming forward, I think we'll start to quantify those numbers for you in much more detail. So this is just a snapshot of what's produced in the red area today, historically, the last several years that we looked at, not accounting for any growth as a result of the new project.
As you said, more, more than likely, it would seem to, that number, these numbers would increase if, as that development unfolds.
I believe so.
So Mayor, just to add to my comments, I'm fully supportive of Finance and Budget having a conversation. I think that would be good in part because I also think there needs to be the conversation of, more general conversation about use of the general fund and what other uses might be merited for the, you know, getting us somewhere closer to our, the range that we've outlined in the policy. So absolutely would be supportive of Finance and Budget reviewing it before we get the chance to look at it again.
All right, thank you. Let's remember Level.
Thank you. On the 1.437 cash from Tutti Road land sale, I know it was, I think you mentioned it was 2.8, and then we're deducting something, what did you mention?
Deducting what we paid for the AT&amp;T property across the street, the east lot and the north area, which is the white shed. That's what we paid for the remaining balance of the AT&amp;T property.
I'm just trying to remember conversations from that. The, how confident are we in the, in the budget that we have here? So that 41, 9, 10 is based on all the, like, I say, we've already contracted the, or we've got a contract on the site work, right, and some of that?
Yeah, so GMP one, that's the off-site utilities and the large infrastructure, that's under contract. GMP two, we did receive bids back on that, and we're working through the final contracting aspects of that package, and that's the big package, if you will. And GMP three, which is the off-site, which is Third Street and Johnson Street, are out to bid currently. So by the time that we come back on February 27th, all of those numbers will be completely solid. But given the numbers that we're seeing right now, we're very confident that they are within, within these numbers here.
And so GMP one is in this $41 million number?
Correct.
Correct?
Yeah, the $41 million number there includes a lot. There's a lot of detail. That includes all of the land purchases as well, includes all of the soft costs, all of the engineering, and then all of the, all of the hard costs as well. And also FFNE, fixtures, furnishings and equipment allowances for all of that. That's a complete, total project package. So all of that, if you were to look at just GMP one, GMP two and GMP three together, they're not going to equal that 41, that almost $42 million. That's the entire project, that's everything, it's all in.
And what funding sources are we using right now for GMP one?
GMP one, we're using the existing appropriations that we've had.
It's in this secured funding?
In that secured funding.
Okay.
We're utilizing those funds for that, as well as capital improvement project funding.
Okay. Does, was it, what about the other bonds that were set to issue here pretty soon that we have in line? This isn't, yes, so this would be in addition to those?
Correct.
Are we cutting any of those, or does that, like, because obviously we're adding now a larger tranche, what does that do to the credit rating if we weren't anticipating doing that?
Good question, that's a question that I did ask our financial advisor. Issuing these bonds for this project has no impact on our ability to issue special obligation bonds as we've planned, as coming up and in the future. There should be no impact on that.
And then the only other thing I was thinking of, does the project, the city's portion of it, does it generate any revenue to the city? Not, I'm not talking about, like, taxes or anything like that, but from the operations, is there any revenue that we'll generate from the activities and things that we do?
Yes, there will be revenues generated from the public components, and that's a piece of the project that's still being put together today.
Might be a nice number to have, like, if we have an anticipation to show some return on, like, what, what the, I doubt it's a ton, but...
So currently, the, the operations modeling that we're doing really does take all of the revenue and put it back into the ongoing operations of the facility. So as far as additional revenue available to go back to pay the, I guess, to participate in the debt service, we're not anticipating the revenues to be able to cover really any debt service amount.
You think it'd be a break-even type, is that...
That's, that's the hope.
That's the hope. Well, I mean, that's important to know. I mean, I think if we were, you know, looking at this holistically, like, if I was coming in and doing a development, this is a lot different, obviously, it's a public, but, so there's an ongoing cost there if it's not break-even, which I think is important, like, we see, like, what does that number look like to, on top of debt service and all these other things?
And the reason why I say that's the hope is because it's really dependent upon how much programming we, we offer for free.
Sure, sure.
So there is a way to make that break-even, as from an operational standpoint. That becomes a bit more of a policy discussion as to, do you limit the programming, do you have more private programming versus the public programming, and what kind of a balance do you want to strike there?
And I'll just come back to my original question, our, so you think, you said it's February 27th, we'll actually have the GMPs in front of us?
Contracts.
Contracts in front of us with a dollar amount. What if it is more than what we're showing here?
So in this 42 million, again, the GMP one, two and three, if you were to total those up, you're not going to see all of the project cost, because the project budget also includes contingencies associated in there, and so there are project contingencies that are included in this 40, I'm going to round up to 42 million. So we, the contractor is carrying some contingency for the contractor that will be in the GMPs, but we as a city, in the overall budget breakdown, have a project contingency as well in order to make sure that we've got those covered. And the, the goal would be to minimize the use of those, but there is an overall project contingency.
You're saying that's built into this number?
Yeah, built into that, built into that.
I think it's all I have right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember DeMoro.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, the GMP one, two and three, I'm just going to reiterate, we will know those numbers by the end of February, correct?
Yes.
I mean, we're certain. So going back to the timeline that you had mentioned about making a decision in March will affect potential financing in May, what, what is the, what is the negative aspect if we don't make a decision until May? And I'm not advocating waiting till May. I mean, are we, what happens if the later the decision is made on how to secure the funding or move money? What is, what is the downfall?
So, so when we come back in February, we will be essentially asking the City Council to enter into those contracts. And so we typically don't do that without an identified funding source. So our goal was to identify the funding sources as early as possible on this, but also have as most, as accurate as numbers as we could with this project, given kind of the unique nature of, of the different uses that we're putting in here. So the, I guess, the, the challenge, if you will, would be entering into contracts that we have not identified the funding source for completely. And so obligating, essentially, we would be obligating funds one way or the other.
But in essence, we would be slowing progress also, right?
Correct, yeah. If, if the, if the decision is delayed, really kind of past those contract dates, then we wouldn't move forward with work associated with those, those projects.
And thank you for that. And the contingency fund, or the contingency that the contractor may have, we have, we have no say in that, right? That's, that's his number, or is that negotiable? They bring it to us, we accept it?
So as the, the project goes on, there's a contingency tracker associated with it, and there's a lot of conversations associated with that. And Lane Four is actually assisting with, with a lot of those conversations as well to determine, you know, which contingency bucket, if a cost was unanticipated, if it, if it really qualifies for use of that contingency. That being said, that is a contract dollar amount that will be there as kind of a percentage and a line item associated in there. Now, if they don't utilize all of the contingency, then that comes back to us, and there is ongoing conversations throughout the project related to that.
That was my next question, do we get a refund? Yes. Thank you for that also. Now, one other question, if, if we were to decide on a number between, let's say, $5 and $11 million, do we incur, can we, is that going to be a transfer in and out, simple transfer in and out of the general fund to, to this construction fund, or do we incur some kind of a fee or transaction?
No, it's, it's a very simple step, it's step number two on this slide here. We will be bringing to you a budget amendment that you approve by ordinance, and it basically, whatever the number is, we move that from the general fund into the Green Street Fund, and it's now available in cash for the project.
But I guess, drawing down, obviously, we have that money in some kind of a fund, some kind of an account.
Correct.
Do, where we're holding that money, are they going, they being the financial institution, are they going, going to say, well, you're moving too much money, we, we need to, okay. Okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Eddie, and, yeah, no.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, before we go back around, I just want to, like, point out, can you go to slide nine real quick? So just big picture stuff here for everyone. So you see the, the middle where it says 35%, that's our ceiling. We have a balance of, if we were to go and spend and have $33 million in the balance in the general fund at 35%. And so because it's close to $100 million budget, for every 1%, basically, it goes down $1 million. So 30, if you wanted a 36 million, or 1% general fund, then we would be putting $10 million into the downtown, 37%, we'd be putting $9 million, 38%, $8 million, $7 million, 40%, $6 million. So basically, you can kind of, for every 1% that that 35 goes up, the number on the left, on the right, the $11 million goes down by about a million. And so if you think of it in that terms, you know, kind of where do you want to be on the percentage, that might help as well. We can wait to vet it all at Finance and Budget and then bring it back through, but I just want to throw that out there as people are going around, so. Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. This question is probably from Mr. Dunning. I believe under the ordinance, you have 60 or 90 days, something like that, to present a list of priorities, 60?
60 days after the financial audit.
Okay.
Is presented.
Which, which we just had that presentation, so how, do you already have a list of priorities in mind? Like, because the question is sort of like, are we looking at this in the context of a bigger list of priorities, and would that be possible at the, at a special meeting or at the March meeting, or when do you think you would actually have those other priorities for us to look at?
We're discussing that tomorrow morning, his management team. So, yeah, we'll, we'll have ideas.
Assuming that that timing is, is doable, I think I'd certainly be open to having a special meeting of Finance and Budget Committee in the next week or two to cash this out a little bit more, but I definitely don't want to push it off too far so that it gets difficult for us to, to make plans. And I think it'll be a good discussion, but I do think spending a little bit more of that fund balances, we're still well above our ceiling right now. I think it makes sense, but, because what we don't take out of the fund balance, we're going to borrow, and that means less that we have to spend on every other project each year as we're paying that debt off. I mean, it's, it's six of one, half a dozen of the other, we're paying for it one way or the other, so I think it makes sense to use some of this money that we've saved up for a priority that we've promised our citizens, but I'm happy to have a fuller discussion of that when we can look at it in the context of some other priorities, too.
Okay, yeah. Sounds good. Councilmember Felker.
Thank you. Mr. Eelm, could you just slide back to the overall costs, a slide that shows everything? Go, different one, sorry. That one. You've probably told me. Explain to me value engineering target, how that, that's, is that some, you know, you're targeting ways to save, or help us understand?
Yeah, so at the time that these numbers were put together in September, our estimates were higher, you know, and the, the $3.5 million value engineering target was a target that we put in there to, to look at how we can reduce cost. I can honestly say right now, the, the numbers came back favorable to where that value engineering target kind of became a lot less of a concern there, to be able to meet the intent and get the entire scope through there. So with all the different numbers and everything, essentially, what that means is we're still going through that, that process, if you will, but we're not shooting for a $3.5 million value engineering out of, out of the project because the construction costs were, were lower.
We haven't heard that recently.
We were, we were, we were very happy about that, but, but that's also one of the reasons why, you know, we wanted to wait until the 27th to, again, hone that in completely instead of maybe rushing some of those, to see if we really needed to change up a spec on, on one item or not as we move forward.
I repeat things sometimes so I make sure I'm understanding appropriately. So again, value engineering target would be those things that you might have said, hey, if we want to be able to decrease the cost a little bit, here's a couple of our strategies for doing so.
Yeah.
And because the costs are actually coming in a little bit lower, you might not have to be as aggressive with some of that, because when you take those things off the table, you're losing something as well, right? It's, it's an expense that is dispensable, if you will, you could do it, perhaps do without or reduce in a certain way.
Yeah, a, a common thing, I guess, to think about in terms of value engineering would be changing the material on something to a lower quality material, changing the finish level of something. It could get drastic to the point to where you have to remove an entire scope component, such as the canopy, for, for example. So we, we had put together preliminary lists of, of items that we were willing to, I guess, consider removing from the project in order to make the budget work if necessary. However, not all of those have to be pursued in order to make this budget. If the direction is we still want to cut that down, we can, we can look at, at cutting that scope through that value engineering process even further.
Thank you. And I think a question for Mr. Bushak, Mr., Councilmember Level was asking, and I, you might have misspoke it, or I misheard it, he was asking about issuing the special obligation bonds we're contemplating here, does it impact our ability or anything relating to our general obligation bond, the plans to do that, issue those in the, in the, in the future? And I think you said in response that it didn't impact, I think what you said was it does not impact the ability to do what we plan to do for general obligation bond issuance.
Correct.
Okay, all right. I misheard, either misheard it, and then you just want to make sure...
That's right. I asked the exact same question of our financial advisor, and the answer is no, should have no impact on issuing GEO bonds.
What, why, why is that? That, like, it's, so if I'm a, if I'm a person going out to take on more debt, I would think that if I take on more debt, I have more risk, so what, what's the, why is it...
Yes, so I guess the question, my question, my thinking was, does it limit our ability to issue GEO bonds? Does it reduce our capacity to issue GEO bonds? Will it make the GEO bond issue that you're about to issue by ordinance next week? Does it change that number in any way? Or future GEO bond issues, does it reduce those numbers? Does it have any impact at all? And the answer is just no. It has no impact on our ability to issue GEO bonds as we plan, based on everything that's already in place.
Could it impact the rate? I mean, that, in my mind, again, if I'm, if I'm borrowing to buy this, and then I borrow to buy that, and if I'm stacking my debts, does the lender want to say, well, you know, he's kind of spreading himself thin and I'm going to...
Well, so, and that, I mean, that's a good question, in terms of, like, longer-term risk, the real risk is if we issue these bonds, and if there's ever a... the real risk is if we issue these bonds, and if there's ever a scenario where the city council doesn't appropriate a payment in a given year, now we've got problems. Very different question than if we proceed as we're planning, does it in any way lessen our ability to issue geo bonds? And the answer is no.
And I'm sorry, I, I'm looking at Mr. Douglas in the back. He's kind of looking like he wants to say something, so I, I would love to hear what he has to say.
I said, Douglas, with Gilmore and Bell Bond Council for this city. Probably one of the biggest impacts on, um, whether it have any impact on the geo bonds that we're contemplating now, or the rest of them that are going to be coming later at the appropriate time, is that your portion of debt that's outstanding compared to your SaaS valuation and, and other comparable municipal entities that have a AAA rating, your, your debt is very, is minuscule compared to, um, what you, you could incur or what you have the ability to incur. And so there's a variety of factors of why the financial advisor came to that conclusion. But primarily, it's just driven by the fact that the amount of debt that you have outstanding is, is a very minor portion, uh, compared to, to your overall debt. Trying to get to the, get to the actual percentage, but my recollection off the top of my head was, it's like, it's 2% of, of your overall SaaS valuation. So it's just a, a very small number. And so the fact that we're borrowing additional monies for general obligation bonds, we're doing the special obligations at the same time, it's, it's not going to impact the ability to implement those, won't have an impact on the, the credit rating of the city or the overall borrowing cost. As Mr. Bushak implied, is like, the, the real problem you might get into, get into is you fail to appropriate monies for the special obligation bonds or something like that. That would be something that would, even though the debt is minuscule, if you, if you fail to fulfill your obligation, that would definitely negatively impact the city crasher, uh, crasher ratings and things like that. So that would have a negative impact.
And just the logical conclusions. Okay, so, yeah, two things in my mind seem to make an impact. One is we don't appropriate enough to pay our actual obligations. And then number two, I assume there's probably some top limit, and there, I know there's probably no number that we're going to throw out today, but there's got to be some number. If our project over there was not 19 million, but was some larger number, there's some impact at some point. And that would make a difference, I would have to assume, but.
There, there would be a number that would potentially impact the, the credit rating, but what, what we're talking about here is, is not, not that number. It's like, I've just found that percentage, your, your geo debt compared to your SaaS valuation is 1.64%. So it's just, it's a minuscule number in the, in the grand scheme of your overall finances.
Right. Good. I appreciate, uh, helping us help me at least better understand. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, just a little perspective too. Um, I like the fact that we're, we have a nice general fund. Given the fact that five years ago, there was a time when we're, we had our budget was 60 million. And so our, um, our balance got down to 28%, which is like 17 million. And we were sitting on, you know, two and a half times that now. So just for the finance and budget, I'm comfortable in that, you know, if you want to stay above 35%, that's fine, but I'm, I'm not wanting to be at 40%. I'd like to be in that, that, you know, that you can, we could stay above 35%, but once we get to the 40s, it's like, if we're not spending on this, we need to spend, be spending on something. And I think that's why you did the cap. Yeah. So, um, if you want to take that as just some general feedback to go back to finance and budget. What I would say. Yes, Councilmember Lovell?
Sorry, I'm just going to add, kind of piggybacking off what Councilmember Felker was saying. I think the idea is like, so we have, we will issue debt, which is going to create new payments or expenses to the city's budget, correct? So we run a budget this last year off of X revenue and X expenses. Now we're adding debt to that, like, you know, how to, you know, what does that debt service look like? And then we have the delta there between our revenues and expenses to easily cover that and give us some cushion both ways. So I think, I think those would be easy numbers to kind of look at, like this is what our debt service goes up to. This is what we expect our revenues to be. This is what we plan for our expenses to be, knowing that that changes and fluctuates too. But I think, to your point, is like, do you have enough revenues coming in minus expenses to cover the debt easily? And I think seeing that too would be, um, helpful in the conversation and kind of presenting it.
Catch all that, Mr. Dunning? Okay. Ms. Werthelmann, I guess it'll be you really helping with those types of things. Okay. Thank you, sir. So we're looking at, uh, special finance and budget session?
Yep, I'm, uh, going to shoot an email off to, um, Ms. Werthelmann and, uh, suggesting a few dates, and we'll send those to the committee.
Everybody's comfortable with that, then we're going to send this to finance and budget. This will be back hopefully by February 27th, Mr. Dunning. So that we can have a discussion about those GMPs, Mr. Elam. And council, we can also discuss the figure, and if you'll come, assuming that we could change whatever the finance and budget decides, but plug in the number, plug in the number that night that finance and budget is recommending. Is that correct? Making sense? Okay. All right. Well done, everybody. Thank you all. Okay, um, then we are on the agenda. We're on resolutions. Would the, would Ms. R. Curry Fowler, Fowler or Curry, I'll get it right someday, Fowler or Curry, Ms. Fowler or Curry, would you please read resolution number 24 dash 03?
Resolution number 24 dash 03, a resolution authorizing the mayor to appoint successor directors to the I-470 Community Improvement District.
I have a motion to adopt the resolution by Councilmember Demorrow, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. Uh, please record the vote. That resolution is adopted. It passes 8-0. Thank you. And then we have proposed ordinances first reading. Councilmember Edson, would you please read bill number 24 dash 020?
Mayor, I move to advance to second reading, bill number 24 dash 020, an ordinance vacating a portion of a certain easement located at 700 Northwest Ward Road in the city of Lees, Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 24 dash 020 by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember Demorrow. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It passes 8-0. That goes to second reading. Councilmember Demorrow, would you please read bill number 24 dash 021?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance to second reading, bill number 24 dash 021, an ordinance ratifying and approving, approving an emergency purchase with Wheaton and Incorporated in the amount of $128,300, and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 24 dash 021 by Councilmember Demorrow, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. And it's animously moves to second reading. Thank you. Committee reports? I guess finance and budget's going to have an extra meeting. Yep. Thank you for that. Any other committee reports? All right. Council comments? Member Felker?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually, maybe a request, and I hadn't, didn't ask you in advance, but, um, if we could, I, I understand the EDC is making some progress on their, at least the ad hoc committee made some progress on the bylaws. I'm just curious if you could give an update on where that's at? And if we're looking at any, um, potential them in the future? And then a second question, so that's the first. And the second was actually maybe for staff on the, kind of related, if you will, is progress on the destination marketing organization, if we have any updates on how that, uh, organization, how things are coming together with that? Thanks.
Yep. So, um, I just had a council, uh, EDC meeting, um, at 3 o'clock today with Mr. Dunning. Agenda, uh, we talked quite a bit about the finances. I'd requested a five-year, year-over-year analysis so we could talk about how, in the next steps, our strategic plan needs to reflect our budget, and our budget needs to reflect our strategic plan. Um, because they haven't, um, well, we haven't had a strategic plan in the past, but there's, they have to somehow equate and be a reflection of each other, support each other. And, um, so we then went into, there wasn't much of a bylaws task force update, but I can, we have two council members that are on that bylaw, uh, committee. So I'll just summarize the fact that we've had many meetings, um, and we have discussed many changes. Maybe four or five structural changes, um, especially regarding composition of the board. They talked about waiting, uh, Mr. Dunning, help me if I say this wrong, but today they talked about waiting to approve those bylaws until we at least start these conversations on the strategic plan. They do, they, for the strategic plan, the chair has invited, um, all the community partners, Chamber, Downtown.
District.
BMO, School District, yeah, and the same two council members, Councilmember Hodges and Councilmember Edson, to partake in, um, the strategic plan. Today, when we talked about this, we were talking about hiring Marx Nielsen to facilitate that. That's a firm that does economic development with a stellar reputation. But it also means writing more checks. So we spent some time talking about the fact that that strategic plan that is in, that they're going to go off of is pretty, um, complicated. It's got a lot of parts and it would require a major investment, and we are a long ways away from that. So we were asking, how long is this process going to take? It wasn't me asking, other coun, other, uh, members were asking, how long is, is this going to take? And, um, there wasn't a good answer. Uh, the Marx Nielsen representative did not make the phone call. I'm just going to guess and say it's going to take no less than an, they were trying to say in the, in the meeting today that it might take three meetings. I'm afraid it's going to take six at minimum. But that's my guess, Mr. Dunning. It's not realistic to think that a person that doesn't know our community and our EDC is going to be able to come in and help, um, rally all of us around a strategic plan in three, in three meetings. So I think it's going to take a half dozen meetings. So you can take that for what you want. It's going to take time, and their concern is, you know, they're on a limited, they're not bringing in any money right now. So, yeah, there's a little apprehension in the room. The, I mean, it was a two-hour meeting. It was, it's kind of hard to summarize, even though I just went through it.
Was the, is that when you talk about, sorry, if you don't mind, a question kind of in the midst of what you're talking about. So the strategic dis, plan or discussion, so they, so I'm thinking of a couple of things. One is I, obviously, we did, um, Brett Wyler, TPMA or TP, I think, the group that, am I right, TPMA? So they have their, what they put together for us. And then if I remember correctly, the EDC does have Northern Iowa, or you, you, they did, they did a strategic plan at some earlier date.
Yeah, that's where they're going to start with that plan.
Okay, so I was, I was wondering, is, is it something where, why, why remake the wheel when you have a lot, seems, I mean, I?
It's impossible to accomplish the strategic plan with, uh, the organization we have. So that strategic plan's going to have to be drastically modified, uh.
Kind of taking into account from where it's at, where the EDC would be now versus where what?
And plus, that, that strategic plan delegates a tremendous amount of responsibilities to the other PSAs, to which the other PSAs have never had buy-in with that. We have to get their buy-in to even broach that. And so that's what this next meeting is supposed to be. However, it's going to have a lot of members. He's invited a lot of people to, to these meetings, and I don't know, I thought, I thought it was a lot. Did you, Mr. 34 people? That's, you know. I mean, I, I, there's just a lot of, there are a lot of question marks, and there are not timelines that I can speak to, that nobody in that group can speak to, like, because they talked about it for two hours, basically. Where are we going? When do we get back in front of council? I mean, Mr. Dunning said, well, the ball's in your court. You, you need to get back in front of council. And, but they don't have a timeline, like, not a timeline.
So, because I thought they, at least previously, there was a discussion of coming back to us when they had revised bylaws that they hadn't adopted yet. So that's obviously still has to happen. And then, I, I can't remember exactly what was on the pre, prior proposal, but obviously it would be to their benefit, certainly persuasive, to have some workings of a strategic plan in, in place to say, hey, now we've revised our bylaws and we have, here's how, here's our plan for moving forward. But incorporate perhaps an ask for the city to provide some support.
All that needs to happen, but it's not going to happen in a timely fashion as far as in the next month or two.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I can, uh, I, I can, I mean, I only think any, any strategic plan is a, I mean, ours took however long to do, for the scope that we had to do as a city, and it's, maybe it's not apples to apples, but I can imagine that it's going to take time and effort to put that together, so. So at this point, the, the challenge is we don't have a timeline. They have, we've not been presented with, here's the target date by which they, they're aiming at least to have a strategic plan. Is that what we're looking?
I think they want to try to figure that out in the next meeting. But the next meeting's going to be a lot of educating a lot of people, so I don't know how they can make a decision in the next meeting. So it might be two or three meetings from now.
You said the Marx Nelson person wasn't in today's meeting.
They, they scheduled a meeting, but they didn't schedule him first. I'm not blaming Marx Nielsen.
Sure, sure, sure. Just saying that that's obviously if whoever is supposed to be the facilitator would hopefully be the person who could say, hey, given what I know, here's my timeline.
Yeah, we haven't had very many conversations with him, other than the bylaws meeting. He didn't say a lot in those meetings. So everything's coming through the chair.
So still, it sounds like we, we're still looking for some certainty before we can even know what we have an opportunity to work with.
I'm just following, yeah, I'm just following the process at this point, which is want to work on the strategic plan and sign responsibilities, which is still, there's going to be challenges because they don't have a staff. They don't have that rock star executive director. They don't have a full board.
Has it been discussed, the idea of pursuing the strategic plan after hiring a director? I mean, as a potential?
I recommend that they reconstitute the board and that they follow all those processes and that the ED be in the room whenever they do that, because that person's supposed to be an expert in economic development and, and in strategic planning. But they think that they can do this through Marx Nielsen.
Seems like it would be, it would be helpful to have whoever's going to right the ship, direct the ship.
Their concern is that it's going to be a lot harder to find a person to fill this position.
Without a strategic plan.
Well, without money, without, um, it's hard enough. I mean, what was the example that, what, what city was it that took, it took a year to find the person?
Overland Park, I believe.
To find their ED person, executive, their economic development person, yeah.
So it's not out of the ordinary that this might, whatever path, I mean, even if you went back and said, look, if, 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 uh, someone was saying, let's, uh, take all the chairs off the deck and restack it, whether it would be, um, the EDC leading the effort, the prior discussions we've had about combinations with the Chamber or, uh, city-driven, led, housed, ED, any one of those seemed like, if that's the experience of Overland Park, which is not us, but a metro community.
I don't think those are going to be conversations that are going to be had in these next meetings. They're, they, they've, they've, they've decided their structure, which is standalone EDC.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying like, i- in terms of our, as a council. Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying, like, i- in terms of our, as a council, kind of, and for me personally, like, what, what are my expectations? Like, well, if that's the experience of other organizations in terms of trying to find the quality executive, like, I shouldn't be surprised if it's challenging for a, a board that is really kind of, has, you know, been brought down and is now trying to build back up to get it to a point where it's going to be what it was, 'cause it's not gonna get there anytime, in my mind, it won't get there right away, but just like, Overland Park took a while without the challenges maybe that we're having, I don't, I don't know why they had to find a new director, but it seems to be a reasonable thought that it's gonna take a while. So, I was just using the other examples, like, even if we were back a few months ago, and we were having this conversation in a different way, there still would be likely a challenge of finding a quality executive to lead whatever future, the future, like, in Lee Summit, so, anyway. I appreciate the feedback, and, I mean, it does seem like, like chicken or egg here, trying to, you know, find the right person who might lead, set the, and there's all, and all the, which chicken, which egg goes first? Is it the bylaws? Is it the strategic plan? Is it finding the right person? And, and then there's the money.
Well, we, we kinda ended our conversation today with, with that discussion, and I, I didn't, I didn't state it, another board member did, but they talked about how we should be thinking big, we should be thinking vision, we should have big visions and not scale this down, and so I came back to that then and said, you know, we're a long ways from having a vision. That should be first, so that we can backtrack into it. If it takes five years to get there, that's fine, but how do you, how do you backtrack in these steps each year and grow and become this great EDC? And, not a lot of, I don't have a lot of answers for you guys. Mr. Dunning, can you help me? 'Cause you were there, I mean, it, it was a tough meeting.
Yeah.
They've all been tough for the last few years, but it wasn't a bad meeting.
No, I, I, I think in many, it was a great discussion, and I think in many ways, you know, the EDC has this strategic plan, and to, I agree with Mayor, right, that it's pretty robust, and in order to fulfill that strategic plan, it's gonna take additional resources, especially from where things are at today. So, there was discussion about, that's the strategic plan of the EDCs right now that incorporates these other partners, as we talked about, but how much ownership and buy-in have those partner organizations had in, in that plan, and are we all rowing in the same direction? So, what I heard today is that, that's just a starting point, to look at that strategic plan, and then have a collaboration with those community partners, and say, if it's not this, this is just a starting point, I guess, is what I would say. So, it's not dead-set, that is the strategic plan, and how can we make it happen? Start that dialogue with our community partners, including the educational folks, 'cause if you look at that plan, it does, as Mayor said, it puts different entities in the lead to take, lead up certain initiatives. So, I think that, that's gonna be, in my mind, a helpful dialogue, but it's gonna take some time to work through that, and, and figure out, how, how are we supporting, I always tie back to our best practices, right? Those four common functions of highly successful EDOs, and as we look at how we're going about our business here in Lee Summit, are some of our partners providing some of those services? And if so, to what level? And is that something that we feel will be something this community desires? And if not, then what's it gonna take to get it to that level? So, there's a lot of, there's a lot of work that would need to take place in order to really get everybody on the same page, on the same plan, and bring that forward.
Thank you, Mr. Dunning, and, I mean, I'm glad to hear there's progress. It sounds like it's, it's not, you know, moving forward at lightning speed or anything like that. I mean, I think in my mind, I think, for anyone who's kinda looking at this from the outside in, I think it can be, shouldn't, shouldn't discount the fact that EDC we're working with is the product of not only challenges from the past, like, that we confronted as the council made decisions, that we did, and I was part of those decisions, where we made, we withdrew funding, but from that time forward, then they've been in a position of, they were in a position of, hey, wait and see, let's see where, what we come back with, and we did, meaning we was really the council with the assistance of a consultant, and that outcome was an outcome that was not going to include them. And so, I, I guess I'm just, I, I think we have to appreciate the fact that they were, in a sense, kind of, put in a induced coma of, of ki, of some kind for a period of time to say, wait, and when you come out, we'll be ready with our recommendation, and that recommendation was, you know, we're gonna play a different kinda game. Now, meaning the consultant's recommendation, wasn't really ours, 'cause we made a decision. So, I guess, I'm, I guess I'm just trying to vocalize what I think I'm hearing that-
You're making a few statements, though. You're, you're saying that the, it wasn't gonna include them, and I, I stated from the beginning, it's still gonna include all the same stakeholders in our community, it's, it's restructuring and reorganizing and setting up, setting them up to succeed.
I, I was referencing when the, when TPMA came back with their, their recommendation, which was actually to go in a, a direction that didn't not, that did not include the current EDC. That's what I was referring to. I, I'm, again, I just think, as we think about decis, as, as I think about decisions, we as council, and the staff goes through, and the things that we do, we take on projects that take months, if not years. And we just talked about today, the PSST, that, the public safety tax, that, sales tax, well, that's a product that really probably had its genesis years ago. Good things are gonna take time, and so, I think as we look at what lies ahead of us, I'm hopeful that this process will, over time, give these community partners the opportunity to really create something wonderful, which I hope we are, as a city, a part of, so. Anyway, just kind of observing and, I've well exceeded my five minutes, I'm sorry.
You're fine. Oh, you're fine. I mean, I needed to give an update of some kind, and, you know, before we get done here, if council members wanna say what how they feel about the bylaw part, I mean, it was fine, it just took a long time to get through a process that didn't seem, to me, as difficult as what it was, but when you have a lot of people in a room brainstorming, it takes, it does take time, so. Okay.
And, and I'd ask for the DMO update, if that's okay.
Yep. DMO anticipated to be back before the council mid to late April. They're in their strategic planning phase, and they wanna have a, a good strategic plan in place, so that that connects with what kinda resources might, we need to, to make the DMO work, so, mid to late April is the target for that.
Thank you, Mr. Dunning, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanna start by thanking you for the kinda detailed update that you gave. That was gonna be one of my first questions, was how those meetings were going, and I, I know it's not decorum to directly address council members, but I did wonder if Councilmember Edson or Hodges had any comments on how those bylaws committee meetings had gone to kinda supplement your comments? Would it be okay if they chimed in a little bit?
If they want to.
Sure. It, it's slow, it has gone very slow. I think the one thing that all of us have brought up multiple times in several different meetings is, you all weren't following your bylaws before, what difference does this make? You're just rewriting them, so why should we think that you're going to follow them now? And for a while, the response was, well, we're gonna have a lawyer at all our meetings. And then at the last meeting, they said, eh, we've decided not to do that. So, they are just convinced that they'll do better this time, that they are going to inform all their board members, that there is a PSA, that they're going to educate the board members on the PSA. I frankly think, I've served on nonprofit boards, I think there's no excuse that the board members didn't know there was a PSA. They, they are responsible, and I'm, I don't understand why they don't appreciate that pact. So, it's, it's just really frustrating. There have been some substantive changes to the bylaws, but there, it's been a lot of wordsmithing, from my point of view. Councilmember Hodges?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think my frustration lands with the amount of time, and I understand Councilmember Felker saying, you know, sometimes good things take time, but at the same time, what is it that we're missing out on that we're dragging our feet for the last couple of years? So, I think we've taken time since the last time, or since we've so-called defunded them, but, and again, there, there were some, I think, great changes made in the bylaws, you know, I liked how they were adding more council involvement, that was a big thing that I think we wanted to see, so that we could be involved in what's actually being said, and the decisions that are being made, so we're not, you know, having to always get second-hand information. It's like, no, we're in the room as well, but I just, I would like to see more action, and I've, I've said that in a meeting, that, you know, I was a little disappointed that it's, over the two years, not a lot of action was done. They could've used those two years to be, okay, let's get our stuff together. What, what is it that we did wrong, so we can improve it and bring it back and say, hey, we learned from our mistake, and here's what we're bringing now, we're a whole new package now, instead of waiting for another consultant, a long dragged-out process that I feel like we've already been through. So, that's kinda where I'm at. I'm kind of on the side where, and I've expressed this as well, where I kinda, I want a so-called date to make a decision, and either, either we're going this route or this route, and I think we need to just really focus on that and get a decision made, so we can just move forward, stop looking back, 'cause I think we're doing a lot of that, and just, I mean, I'm sure there's gonna be some disagreement in that, but at the same time, we need to, we need to figure it out. We need to all come together and say, you know what, it's gonna make some people mad either way we go, but we still have to make a decision, because just dragging our feet is accomplishing nothing, so that's kinda where I'm at, but again, there were some good things that were, were done in those meetings, and a lot of, you know, people shared opinions that I thought were very helpful, and, but yeah, so that's just kinda where I'm at on that situation.
Thank you. Have, have they actually adopted new bylaws that I wasn't clear on?
They've got a, they have a draft that we've worked on, and they don't, I don't think they plan on any more meetings with us, no. So, they've got this draft that came from what you would call an ad hoc type committee, and then in their hands to move forward with when they feel it's, the time is right. I can't really answer that.
Guess the way I'd put it, Mayor, is the dra, just like you did, the draft is out there, the, the task force has done their work, but has the board and, and the membership approved the amended amendments to the, to the bylaws? No.
How, how long have they had that draft?
Couple of weeks. A cou, couple of weeks ago, we, we kinda finalized our suggestions from the task force, and then the, the attorney assisting them did kind of a final cleanup to that, which, I'm guessing that they've been, this final draft's probably been in place for about a week.
Okay. So, what's been on my mind, because I've been thinking kind of similar to what Councilmember Hodges said in terms of a date, is, I actually went back, and I watched our October seventeenth meeting, where we had the joint session with the EDC, and at that meeting, we were told from October to December, they would prepare new bylaws and review best practices and strategic plan. In December to February, we would prepare a new PSA, they'd try to work with the city on that. In February, they'd reconstitute their board, and in March, they'd hire a new leader and rebrand themselves, and obviously, that timeline is not happening. They told us that they would have new bylaws in place two months ago, and now I'm hearing that bylaws kinda drafted, they haven't been approved, they wanna do a new strategic plan, because I guess they can't execute on the one that they already spent a bunch of money on a couple of years ago. They wanna hire yet another consultant, they wanna have a big community partner being, which community partner engagement is great, but again, they've had years of knowing that they had these issues, when they could've had all these meetings, and we've had a lot of, like, when we did our best practices study, we had a gigantic community, we had ton of community involvement and feedback of what do we want an EDC to look like, what does it need to do? A lot of the members, current and past members from the existing EDC were part of that. It's not like we haven't done this. And, so I just, I look at all this, and I think, that October seventeenth meeting, to me, was already their fourth chance, fifth chance, you know, we, we asked for more, and I know we don't wanna rehash the past, but I just, I, I think it's important to look at the overall history, like, we, we asked for more engagement with council, we told them that they weren't fulfilling their obligations, we cut their, we reduced their funding, and then we cut their funding. There, there have been many, many steps along the way where they could've done some reflection and said, hey, maybe we need to do some community engagement, maybe we need to review our structure, maybe we need to talk with the city about how we can function, like, there were, there were many, many warning signs along this path, where they could've stopped and evaluated and done more. And so, in this October meeting, we were like, half of, you know, a good chunk of us were ready to move forward in a different direction, based on the study that we had already done, the best practices study, but we said, okay, we'll listen to you, and, okay, you have this plan to put some new structure in place, we're gonna give you a chance. But to me, it seems like they've wasted that chance. I understand that schedules are busy, and the holidays happen, and this and that, but if this was, if this was really a priority, and if they really had the capacity, they would've gotten to something by now, and they wouldn't be talking about doing yet another consultant to tell them what at least two other consultants have already told them, because they already did a strategic plan, we already did the best practices study, we've already done all these community engagement sessions, what more is there to learn? We know what we want the organization to do, and the problem to me is that this organization is not capable of executing on that. And if we had any other contracts, PSA, again, is a public service agreement, it's not an organization, it is an agreement for services, and if we had any other contract, where a contractor said to us, you know, we think in a couple of years, we might be able to fulfill the services that you want, after having breached the prior contract and been terminated for services in the past, and, and if we said, you know what, okay, go ahead and submit another, you know, request for, I, I know this isn't exactly our process, but okay, go ahead and submit your RFQ to us, and they were like, well, okay, but actually, we need you to extend the deadline again. Like, would we do that? We wouldn't for any other vendor, and I know that they're not a vendor, but they're an organization who is supposed to be providing services to the city, and they're not able to. So, at this point, I feel like we've already given them all of their chances and all of their warnings, and I'm ready to cease engagement on this topic, and cease discussion of funding them going forward, and, and look in a different direction. I think that we should, and what I would love to see going forward, is to have staff look at the recommendations in the best practices study that we did, and bring forward, what are some ways that we could move forward without the existing EDC? We know that there are, you know, new organization could be formed, we could bring it in-house, we could do some kind of other structure. I'd like to see some option-driven structures, and start moving forward on one of those. I know it's, Councilmember Felker made some good points about, whatever we do will take time, but to me, it's like starting a new diet or exercise program. You will never regret having started last week. You will never regret starting right now and moving forward, because the longer you wait, the longer it's gonna take to see results. So, I feel like we've given many, many chances, and that, to me, it's time to move forward, so that's, that's where I'm at, and that's what I'd like to see. Thank you.
Thank you. I will comment on a couple of things. Something that you just said in there was capacity, and then Councilmember Felker referred to chicken and egg, like, how do you move this forward when they, they are incapacitated? That's where they are, they're incapacitated, they don't have an executive director, they don't have a full board, they've got a board, but it's, it's a skeleton board at this point, and I don't know how they think they're gonna get there, and I, I try to say, you know, how are we gonna, like- Like, Marx Nielsen is the answer? They're going to come in and tell us how to do this? Yes, they say yes, because this is what they do for a living. This is Or, we had TPMA, like you said, come in. And they really have confidence, and I, I thought it was hard enough with TPMA. They don't know our community necessarily, but they were experts. And now we're going to go with Marx Nielsen, which, they've been in a couple of meetings, but they haven't been vocal, and they haven't really gotten the weeds with us. And so, it's, it's just a little concerning that we are starting over, but because I keep thinking, how are we going to? I, I can do the long play, because they talked about that today, you know, let's do the, you know, this is going to take time, like Councilmember Felker said, but I don't know how this is going to get off the ground, because usually at the beginning, there's a bunch of work that gets done for it to be able to start operating on its own. And so, I, I mean, I'll let Councilmember Edson chime in, she's got the, got her buzzer on here.
Well, and to follow, follow up, I mean, they've had an executive director hired for more than a year, right? Doesn't Ms. Evans work? She's had a contract for more than a year, but I don't know that they have her out doing anything other than working on the bylaws. So, to me, that, that's a huge fail on their part, because they could have been using this time to say, hey, we do have somebody, we are working, and show that they're willing to put forth some effort. But instead, they've got her, I don't know, working on the bylaws and meeting this committee, and I don't know that she's going after any businesses or anything. And so, they wasted this time by not proving, yes, we can do this. And I'm not really sure why they have a staff member right now, other than me. So, I think that's just another example of the kind of outcome we're going to get from the EDC.
Typically, I would say, let's, you know, let's let, set a meeting with the chair or, and their director. That's what I would typically say. You would say, let's set a meeting with the chair and the director. And in this situation, I, I can do that. I can set a meeting with Mark Dunning and, or have Mark Dunning meet with them and me and say, where are we headed? What are we doing? Because it's not going very well. I don't think they're ready to come back in here, Mark, Mr. Dunning. I, I don't think they're prepared. I mean, I don't think they could give us the direction in the next 30 days as to where they're going. I, I, I don't mind having them come in if, at this point, and tell us why and such, but I've got, I've got a couple of councilmembers now that are saying, let's just move on. So, what's, what's the path? I guess I shouldn't be asking you, I should be asking the councilmembers. Councilmember DeMorrow, help, save me here, what's, what's your opinion in?
Thank you, Mayor. As, as far as, as far as saving, I don't, I don't know. That's, that's a huge task to, to, to stay the course. It's been, it's been 18 months of unfortunate circumstances, and I, I do embrace the conversations that have, have just happened. I, my opinion is that this, this is an organization that is not even in first gear yet. They, they, again, they've had 18 months. It, it was a, like I said, unfortunate circumstance that we had to call a breach in the first place, and I, and I won't dwell on the past, but it happened, the, the breach was not cured, and there's been 18 months of non-functioning. And as Councilmember Edson said, there is, there is an executive director. I've often also wondered, is there going to be anything positive come out of, of having a staff member? It would have been very impressive to, to bring us something that they were involved in. There's been, there's been a lot of, of back and forth, I realize, a lot of meetings. We had, we paid a consultant, and, and they were pretty, they were very specific on the path forward. And, and as everybody on this dais remembers, the path forward did not include the, the current situation. And I will reiterate that it is a PSA. It's, it's an organization that is still an organization within our city. The only difference is, it's not funded by the City of Lee's Summit. And they are free to, they are free to do anything under their purview that they see fit. Have they done anything? No. And I, for one, am, am ready to actually move forward. We, we, the longer we wait, there, there is a possibility we will get behind. Right now, development is thriving in Lee's Summit. You know, I, I feel that somebody could counter my, my next statement, and that is, we're not really missing on a lot, however, we don't know what we may, what we may be missing out on. But I, for one, embrace moving on, doing something different, trying to figure out what we are going to do different, and, and, and giving the the finality of that us as a council, city council, are ready to, to try our other options. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Mr. Dunning, you, you think you and I can have a co, go ahead, Councilmember Felker?
Sorry, Mayor, thank you. I didn't know if anyone else had anything more to say. I, I just want to comment a couple of things. Before we cut funding, they had, I mean, I think, as we think about context here, they had three, at least three FTE working for them. So, they had a staff. We cut, was it a third of their budget? If not, I don't remember exactly what portion our, our funding was, but certainly cut that back, eliminated it. So, there are changes in staff, and I don't know if Ms. Evans is a, even a full-time employee. I think she's part-time. That, I may not be, I can't represent one way or the other, but I
She's under contract, and I don't believe she's 40 hours a week.
So, my, my assumption is that they've, they've tried to hire somebody who would keep things at least somewhat together. And again, I just come back to this. We gave clear instruction to, to them that we were not ready to move forward with them as a partner, to enter into any kind of agreement until we presented options for them that included best practices and included then a study that was going, that was going to come back with recommendations. And we did that, and those recommendations did not include continuing with the EDC board as it was. So, I cannot say enough, when you put an arm in a sling, everyone's done, everyone's seen this, either yourself, to yourself, or to a family member, when that arm comes out of the sling or out of the cast, it is emaciated. And yes, that is where it's at right now. And, and I'm, I, I can, I can only imagine that any organization that was told to just sit and wait and not, because that, that, that's what we said, we weren't going to play ball with them until that time. Does that mean they couldn't do anything? Well, they continued to hold events, they continued to promote, at least it seems to some extent, but they didn't, they couldn't retain staff. When, in my mind, you think, well, if I was a staff member, I would say, well, there's a city that doesn't want to work with this organization at this time, I'm going to go find something else, and that's what we saw happen. Great employees who moved on to bigger and better things. They could have been great assets to our community, but unfortunately, they got caught in the crosshairs of what I think was a failure in leadership that existed then that does not exist necessarily now in the same form. Those changes in leadership happened as a result of what we decided. And so, I guess my thinking here now is, if we go back to this community, this, this group of business leaders and say, okay, we're done with you, we're moving on, we're telling those business leaders, we, we don't want their participation. And, and I'll just say it, my, I don't know what the outcome of what we would decide would be, but in my mind, if it included come, bringing it in-house, I don't think that's the rest, the best solution for moving forward. I think having an independent body allows us to have perspective and and community buy-in from business leaders that if we control it here, I think we lose. I think we lose. I think we lose something valuable. And I think it's, it's a statement to that business community that we don't think they can come together. They haven't come up in a timely fashion. I agree. In fact, if I have a conversation with any of those board members, I'll say, you guys need to speed up. To Councilmember Shields' perspective and comment, I would love to see it move faster. So, I hope that message is communicated. I, I certainly agree with that sentiment, but I don't think that saying we're done with them is the right solution. I do think that there continues to be an opportunity for members of our business community to come together and create something that we can be proud of.
Ball's in their court, Councilmember. Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just kind of wondering exactly what's being proposed, because I feel like it's pretty obvious that some councilmembers are on a, on a, maybe have been privy to information that others have not. So, I'm just cutting to the chase, what exactly is being proposed? Thanks.
Let me go to Mr. Head. When, when does a council comment, conversation become an agenda item? Because that's what's happened. And if we're going to have this much of a detailed discussion, then I need to put it on the agenda, and we need to have a discussion. But, I mean, what I heard proposed is a council member say that they were ready to be done with the current existing EDC, and I haven't really, I've heard others chime in and say, yeah, it's been, it's been too long and such, but that's the only thing I've, I've heard on the table so far. From, from your position, what?
I, I don't think I have any legal guidance that I can give you about when it becomes a, a, I mean, a discussion item versus an agenda item. I mean, I think you're still in discussion, you don't, you're not, nobody's pulling an ordinance, you know, out of the air and trying to pass something. There's, there's none of that, so I don't think it necessarily is forced to be an agenda item. You know, for the sake of agenda management and everybody being prepared to have a discussion, it probably would be best to say, we're going to set this aside, and we're going to start discussing it at XYZ meeting in the future.
So, the way I heard Councilmember Shields say, she wants to have a discussion so that we can make a decision on whether or not we want to go forward with the EDC. And that means, that means an agenda item that I need to consider putting on the agenda, because that's how this usually works, or we usually send it to committee, but we can't send this one to committee. Now, if we do that, you know, does EDC want to be invited? I'm sure they do. So, I think you just put it on the table and let them, let them come and let them say what they want to say. Dunning, do you agree with that? Because they would be, they would feel, they would, just give them their shot.
I think that would be appropriate, and I think part of our challenge here, just listening, is that there's not a clear, agreed-upon plan to move forward that's, that's understood, right? And I'm recalling Councilmember Shields, their, their timeline and their steps, and and that, that even wasn't, to my knowledge, agreed to when we had the work session, right? That was just a proposal. So, I think that's a little bit of the disconnect here, is there, there is no plan that everybody has agreed to, so that's presenting challenges for us.
It was just a proposal. What exactly is a proposal? What, what has been proposed exactly?
Well
So, just so we're all in the loop, just because
I think it'd be helpful, and I happen to have this, because we just came from the EDC meeting, but this, this proposal that Councilmember Shields referred to was the EDC's proposed timeline and steps to work through reconstituting the EDC. That's very, just looking at the dates, it was very aggressive, and obviously, we're experiencing that because those, those dates aren't hitting those targets, so. Well, I think, and, and I'll be quite honest, I, I, at the EDC board meeting today, I talked a little bit about that, what is the plan? We've just kind of got steps mapped out right now. The task force, which we did, the bylaws, and now this discussion about considering the strategic plan. But it hasn't, there's not been agreement to the, to an approach right now.
And that's the only thing being proposed then, I guess?
But to my knowledge, that's the next step of, but I, I don't know if they're following this, because we're not in compliance with it if it is, right? Based on dates, but
And there's nothing being proposed by us necessarily?
Not, not from our end, no, because to my knowledge, we talked about, well, I'll go back to, Mayor, you put some, some ideas out there that we discussed in a council meeting, and there wasn't consensus, consensus to move that forward. And that's where I do recall, well, we'll bat the ball back into the EDC court and see where they're at. That's, that's where I remember things ending up, at least in this setting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hodges?
Thank you. Could you maybe describe, so maybe we know what to look for? Like, so, if we're going to eventually make this decision, hopefully sooner than later, is that going to take an official vote? Like, what does that look like in order for us to make a final, either whether it's a cut or whether it's saying we're going with it, regardless of what that's going to be? Is that what it looks like? Or how are we going, is that, it's not, it always feels like it's just something that's always up in the air? And it's, how can we make sure that we're saying, we're deciding tonight, I mean, not like tonight, but like, this is the night? And what does that look like for this kind of a decision?
I don't, I don't, I think they need a timeline, and they don't have one. But, well, they have the one that they, that they proposed in October, but they're
But I feel like we need to make our timeline, because I feel like we keep going off of their stuff, and for us, we're the ones sitting here waiting. And I know I've said this before, but I just want to make sure, it would be nice, since it was this council that made the, the hard call, I feel like, to defund them, and we got a lot of grief for it, but we felt like it was the right thing to do, that I want to make sure, it would be nice if it was this council that said, okay, we felt confident enough to do that. So, and, and because we did that, we're now feel confident in whatever direction we all have decided to go. And again, there will be varying opinions, but for the majority, so I just want to make sure that we're able to do that in a timely manner and, and, and say, okay, this is what we want, this is what we're looking for, not, well, they want it, they want to wait a little bit, or blah, blah, blah. And that's fine. Again, if we want to go, if, if that's the majority, what they want, that's great. But regardless, I feel like I'm tired of it just being up in the air, and nothing's really within reach. So, I would just like for something, something to be set to where we go. Here's the hard date, this is our date, there's, there's no more grace. It's, and if nothing's done and whatever, and, and people aren't happy with that, that's okay, but we're giving a date that says, we want it, we want to make a final decision so we don't keep looking in the past, and we can move forward regardless of the decision that majority wants.
I don't know how to give her, I, I, I don't know how to give that to Councilmember Hodges at this moment. I have to think about how to do that. Like, I was ready to, I moved for consideration a way to move forward, and we didn't have a consensus, and then they didn't, they did take on the bylaws, changed the composition of the board, but they haven't changed the composition of the board, they said that they would. So, I would, I needed, I need an agenda item to discuss all of this with you, to establish a date, and to give, to give staff a little bit of time to propose, make some proposals and help strategically think this through for us. They're, they're the ones that always get us through these. I mean, you see how everything, you guys are giving us information so we can make the best decisions possible, and I think that's what we need. I just, I just think that to do that, we also have to invite members of the EDC. I just let them have
So, can I ask why? Like, what, what would be the reasoning of that? Because ultimately, it's, it was, we didn't, I mean, it's our decision to cut it, so why are we having to help?
We don't have to, it's just, you said that we took some grief for it.
Yeah.
We made that one decision, we would take grief for not bringing them into the room.
And I think that's where I'm at, is like, we keep taking grief for the same scenario, and it's like, I'm, I'm kind of tired of it, because we're having And it's like, I'm kind of tired of it because we're having, it's like doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results. And so it's just, I want to either, I just want to make a decision, and that's what we're going with, so that way we can stop taking grief, is kind of where I'm at.
All right, let me go around to these other council members, because I don't have a great answer right now. Councilmember Edson.
Yeah, after that work session, I feel like a lot of us expressed some of the problems we had, that we wanted to move on, that there was a lot of trust issues. And somehow, we got dragged down into this rewriting of the bylaws. And instead of us making decisions, we're waiting to see what they come up with. And I don't know why we're doing that anymore. And to Councilmember Felker's point about the staff, and we hamstrung them by taking their funding, they had three or four staff members for 10 years and didn't bring us any jobs. So I don't really, that's why we called the breach, because they had the staff. We were basically paying for the staff, and they weren't doing what we contracted them to do, to Councilmember Shields' point. So, yeah, I think we've been dragged down. And to Councilmember Hodges, I would like to, or, yeah, sorry. I would like to see us come up with a date of, if not moving forward or cutting the strings, at least having a date of figuring out what we're going to do. Are we going to just continue to, you know, go to their meetings and rewrite their bylaws and just talk about it for another year, or are we actually going to?
Thank you. Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, obviously, my position has been made pretty clear. I just, the less meetings we can have about this, the better. Because we've already had these meetings. We've already had these discussions. We've already done the study. We've already had the joint session with the EDC. We've already done all this. I feel like we've already given all the chances, had all the meetings, done all the research, and I feel ready to make a decision. And if the rest of the council doesn't feel ready, okay. But I don't know what other information we can possibly gather at this point. So I, I mean, I'm ready to make a decision tonight, but maybe it's an agenda item at our next meeting, and we pick a decision.
Yeah, I think we need to.
It's obviously up to you to manage the agenda, but, yeah.
Otherwise, it would look like we're making a decision off the cuff in a council comment-type section. And I remember those days from before I was on council, and it didn't come across the right way, legal as it might be, right? Because you couldn't stop it back then either. But I would like us to try to, I think you've done, to be honest, you all have done a great job of articulating your thoughts, and they need to hear this. So the board needs to understand how the council feels. The board does not understand how council thinks or feels. They do, but they don't. I mean, it's a different, in fact, I said it in the meeting today. Do you remember when I said, "The council sees this as an investor, but it's different than a business that invests in the EDC." A business that invests in the EDC wants to see, you know, certain types of tangibles, and it's just a lot different from the city council's perspective. And I know it's even different for the staff's perspective, because they're a lot of times trying to work with their staff, one-to-one. I do, I mean, my opinion on this, if you want to know my opinion, is that we don't have a relationship. We just don't have a relationship, and we're supposed to be trying to seek a relationship-driven EDC, effective leadership, and we have neither of those right now, a relationship-driven or one with leadership. Now, those board members are wonderful leaders. And in fact, just so you all know, every single one of those board members, every single one, is managing a bigger company than I ever dreamed of managing, okay? But they're also CEOs that don't have the time to be attending a lot of meetings any more than any of us do. So they are in a tough spot, and I don't think they chose the right order of their, of the way that they wanted to get this done. And I'll put it on an agenda. What's today? Today's February 6, 7? It's a weird month. And you know, on the 27th, we got a lot of GMPs, and it's been actually a little bit weird to schedule because we've been, we've got the MML, and then Washington DC in March. I mean, we have some things to juggle here ourselves. But I can set this up, and I can also, I think it's sad that we're at the point where the only relationship the EDC has with us is with Mark Dunning. That's kind of the way it is. Everybody's comfortable calling Mark, but that's kind of where we are. Which I'm glad that they're comfortable calling you, Mark, but you're not all of us. You're just, you're the city manager, and you're the leader of the city. But we're a part of the city too, so it's, we're still not in a healthy spot. So I think that that's as much of the problem as anything. So I'll try to let you all know via email when I can get this on an agenda. I'll talk to Mr. Dunning about what ideas his staff can bring forth. Is that fair? Okay. All right. Man, I'm sweating. Okay, because, man, that was a, all right, where are we at? Council comments. Anybody else? I feel like my wife, she's always fanning herself these days. Taylor Swift, did you see her fan? She has a fan now. She covers her mouth so you can't, so you can't see what she's saying when she talks. Mr. Dunning, staff roundtable?
Yes, one item, Mayor, just coming through. Ryan mentioned it when he was talking about the downtown Market Plaza project, about some street closures. And I will shoot you an email on this. And I know our Public Works Department has already put out some information to our community partners on this. Spire is planning on doing some daily road closures to Third Street, which will affect some of our north-south alleys as well, to do some gas infrastructure work that is connected to the downtown Market Plaza project. So starting on Valentine's Day, a week from tomorrow, on the 14th, they will have Third Street close to, let's see, they're going to close initially Third Street, but allow, I'm looking at the email here, eastbound lane of Third Street, between Douglas and Green Street, and a section of the alley between Third and Fourth will close for two weeks. And then after they get that done, then they'll move to the other side of Third Street and do that work. So for a month's timeframe, there's going to be a lot of switching of traffic patterns between the hours of nine and four. So these are going to be daily closures impacting downtown on the Third Street corridor. So I'll shoot this information to you. Just got it, and it's just going out now. So we'll communicate with our downtown, at least on Main Street as well. So progress is painful, but it's necessary infrastructure work to take place. So that's it, Mayor. Just, I'll get this out to all of you.
All right. We still have more work to do, even though it's in the meeting. Would someone read us in the closed session? Councilmember DeMaro, please.
Present to Section 610021 of the Revised Statutes of the State of Missouri pertaining to legal actions, causes of action, or litigation involving a public governmental body in any confidential or privileged communication between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys, I move for closed session.
Second?
I'm motioning to move in a closed session by Councilmember DeMaro, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Seeing none, oh, yes, Councilmember Felker.
Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from both the vote on this because of a conflict of interest.
Yes, thank you. Seeing no further discussion, can I get a roll call vote?
Councilmember DeMaro?
Aye.
Councilmember Shields?
Aye.
Councilmember Edson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryor?
Aye.
Councilmember Hodges?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Lopez is absent. Mayor Baird?
See y'all.